Sorry, I was muted. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Cruz?
Present.
Ms. Fox? Catherine?
Yeah, sorry, child, present.
Ms. Hume?
I'm mute.
Ro, Hume? Okay, you must be muted.
She's not muted. Oh, we just can't hear her.
Okay.
Got it.
All right, I see her. Okay. Mr. Malloy?
Present.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mrs. Welby?
Present.
Mrs. Yanni?
Present.
Ms. Gil Martin? Nine present. Sorry. That's okay. There we go.
First of all, I would like to yet again thank everyone for bearing with us. We really, really do try to get out on time and we fail miserably at it each time. So I apologize. Mrs. McTiernan, we have some presentations this evening.
Yes, we do. Would you like to start from the top of the work session, please?
Yes. Right center?
Yes. Mrs. Rosenkrantz? Any of Mrs. Rosenkrantz here?
I'm here.
Okay.
All right, so I just wanted to join you guys tonight and just let you know that we have a click still at West Intermediate and we're open to the general community. We're still serving the kids that need help with vaccines or well visits. The other thing that I want to let you guys know that we have a pediatric therapist now, so we could see the school age kids. If you know of any children or families that are struggling with the anxiety surrounding the pandemic, we are there to service everyone and we're even doing telemedia visits. So I just thought reaching out to all of you guys would be the best way to somehow get it to your students, that we're still here to help everyone from babies through their parents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. I believe next on the agenda is Ms. Hume?
Yes, we have an update from the Environmental Task Force. Director Hume, I can't hear you. Ro, at the bottom of your screen, you may need to join with audio. That's what I had to do.
All the way far left.
She's not muted on my end, so I can't even unmute her.
Okay. Nope, we still can't hear you.
No.
We might have to ask you to call in.
Excuse me. Ro, if you can hear me, if you go put your cursor to the bottom of your computer screen, there's going to be a toolbar that comes up. And then there is a cross over the mute button. If you do that, you should get audio. If you unclick that, it's far left bottom toolbar at the bottom left of your screen.
Katie, would you like to, Director Gil Martin, would you like to move on and then we can come back?
Yes. What? Oh, wait, we're getting a, yes, please move on.
Okay.
Send me a link. I will rejoin. Okay.
Okay. All right. I will, once I, oh, I will try to add her once I move on to the next item.
Okay.
Okay.
But Ro, you are able to hear us. Nope, she's gone entirely. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Doherty? You have two items, please. You're up next. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Two discussion items I have tonight. The first is in reference to the Northeast Porticoes, the little roofs that are over two of the doors on East Gibson Street. This had gone in front of the board once before to have Palumbo, to have Palumbo prepare the bid specs and coordinate with GPI, Greman Peterson, who are structural engineers, to get that out. Before we could use that area, those entrances as the main entrance at Northeast, which is in the new section, this work would have to be done. If you recall, those board members that were on last November when this got tabled, we were only allowed to use that as an emergency exit because we'd put up safety netting. But to use that as an everyday entrance, there's some structural work that needs to be done. I wanted to discuss this before the board meeting because I know that we do have an engineering RFP that's out there that I think you might be taking a vote on and architectural RFPs. The reason Palumbo and GPI were used in this, for this resolution was this project dates back to, all the way back to November of 2018, when this project started. It was part of a vestibule project, whereas when they got in and did work, they found that there was more issues within this entrance and then it turned out to be a structural issue. And the board in November, when this resolution came up, chose to table that for whatever reason. Now with Northeast being worked on and we no longer have the entrance on the old, the end, the main entrance on the old side, we would need to use one of these entrances as the main entrance. So I guess I'm asking that we move ahead with this project, but if you wanted to table this again at this meeting until we appoint an architect and an engineer, that's certainly within your discretion because with the current state of COVID-19, although I'm very hope, I'm hopeful we could get back to school, I'm not confident we're going to get back to school this school year. So I mean, that's completely up to you and your discretion, whether you want to move ahead with this and get this done as quickly as possible or see how you move ahead with the engineer and architect RFPs this evening.
Mr. Doherty, did we ever get a timeline on how long this would take once it starts?
The work, I don't have an exact timeline. They told me the work is not as extensive as they initially thought, but it's definitely going to take some work. I don't think they're replacing the stones that are there. I think they're resetting the stones that are on top of it.
Okay, but we don't have a week, it takes three days. We don't have any kind of estimate?
I don't. I mean, because well, the bid process alone is going to take, I would take, you know, would take weeks and then we would appoint them at the next board meeting. So I would think if we were going to go that route, I mean, unless we kind of moved on to today, I don't know how we could possibly get back into that school this year.
Can, can you hear me now, Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, if we've already, sorry, that was a technical, technological miracle for me to do that. You have no idea. If we, as I understand the discussion, we've got, already done a lot of work on this, have they not?
They've done a lot of work, yes.
Then my feeling is it probably makes sense for us to move ahead with them to do this.
Well, Palumbo was the architect that did the initial project back in November of 18.
Yeah. It seems to me that finish what we started on this. It's, we've just got to get that school going and leaving aside other things we're going to discuss this evening, it just makes sense to not change cooks halfway through the recipe.
You're right. I mean, either way, this work is going to have to be done, but I mean, I don't know what architect is going to get appointed this evening. But I mean, we could use, if, if an architect is being appointed this evening, I guess I don't even know that, that if we are appointing a different architect, we could use that person.
But, but would they then have to go back and redo some of the work that Palumbo have already done?
No, we've already done the structural study. We have that, that, we have a structural study that was done last fall. We also have an updated look at it from just a couple of weeks ago. So we have that. So we would just need someone to take that documentation, make a design of the work that needs to be done and then get it out for bid.
Okay. Well, it'd be great if we could authorize that tonight so that we can get it out for a bid. I don't know how others feel, but my feeling is we need to get that work out for a bid as soon as possible.
That's, that's completely up to your discretion.
I agree with you, Ro. This is Tarianni. I'd like to get moving with it. Get that done.
And if the quickest way of doing it is to have Palumbo do that on this, this job, then, then we couldn't do that tonight without having to go back to appoint an architect of record or an engineer of record and then go back to them and talk about it and ask them to do it. Is there anything to stop us making that, that move forward tonight?
No, I, I don't believe so. I reached out to Palumbo and I made sure like the cost, I'll say the same and everything was the same. And yes, they're ready to move ahead. They just need the, the green light, obviously, from the district.
And right now it's just for them to prepare the RFP, correct?
Correct. And then to, then to evaluate the bids when they came in, to design the project, design the RFP and then evaluate the bids when they and then oversee the work.
Does anyone have any other questions? Go ahead, Ro.
I was going to say, is there nothing, is, is there a way we could commission them to oversee the RFP and get the bids in? And then were they not to be the engineer of record, get someone else to oversee the project or is that not kosher? I don't know.
Well, I think the price that's quoted in this RFP is for that whole package.
Okay.
And it would just be this, this one project.
Okay. Well, I, I just think we need to get it done. I just think, I think that, that we just, in my opinion, we should go ahead and do it. Yep.
Very good. Do we have any other questions about the scope of the project?
Anyone else have feedback on that one?
Before we move on to Chromebooks, Ro, do you want to jump back in with the Environmental Task Force? Is that okay with you, Paul?
Oh, that's completely fine.
I just feel we have to do.
Real, real quick, can I just say, I, we're getting messages that people aren't able to get this on YouTube and it blacked out. Is Bill Delpree on here?
He is, and he just said a message should be back.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I think, I think we have so many people on this meeting. It's, I'm finding we're breaking up very often. It's like, it's like the meeting's almost stuttering. Okay, so I just wanted to give the board a brief update on the Environmental Task Force meeting that took place on the first of April last week. We were all there except for Mr. Werner, who was making COVID-19 things at Tonganik for which we thank him a great deal. There was a brief report on the remediation work at NEIS, which will be, which probably has already been posted on the website. The removal of the hazardous waste was completed in the previous week. General waste disposal is going on and school records and everything that need to be preserved are being preserved. I would recommend that people look at the interim report that the Kachadi and Associates posted on the website because, because there are some very useful links in that towards overall environmental guidelines for us all going forward and it's useful for the public to know that. The Mr. Doherty reported the 1931 building has been approved by the Scranton Fire Department for an occupancy of 1,200, which is more than adequate for school needs. So the old building will be completely isolated from the new building and inaccessible when NEIS is reopened. Dr. Kachadi's had several verbal discussions with the EPA. The updated AHERA management plan for the building will be prepared to reflect that the old building is being cut off. And then he will write to the EPA and ask for them to give us approval for the new plan. It's unlikely that they're going to give us definitive approval in writing, but this isn't going to impede the progress or the work towards eventually reopening. Mr. Pagliisi is now the district's authorized inspection officer, who's nearly completed the six month inspection of all the buildings as called under the AHERA management plans. At this time, all abatement work associated with the AHERA removal priority level one and two items has been completed. It's planned, excuse me, that all remaining abatement work associated with level three and four items will be completed during the summer. The, and those will be put out, the work of that will be put out for bid as soon as possible. And Mr. Doherty is going to do, I think, he talked to us about that during the work session, I think. Ms. McTiernan informed us that all principals have been instructed to conduct walkthrough inspections of their schools to identify other storage areas that need cleaning and organizing. We were a bit surprised at what we found under NEIS. And it's apparent, it's the district's intention that everything should be cleaned out and disposed of safely. We discussed the latest facility study of the district buildings and it felt it was timely that a new facility study be conducted. At present, all school buildings are open daily for food distribution. Depending on what happens, that was just when the extension for school closures for the foreseeable future was announced. We can look, we'll be looking at environmental impacts of some of those buildings are closed. Going forward, we'll schedule preventative maintenance, particularly on anything that affects school environments. And we set a new meeting for April the 15th at eight o'clock via Zoom and that was the meeting.
Director Hume, thank you very much for that. It was another productive session. I, I do see that, well, several things. I know we are having some technical difficulties and I do see that Mr. Delpree is on top of it. So he is monitoring the, the situation and trying to make sure we stay connected on YouTube. Mr. Audi, I, I just want to confirm that this meeting is being recorded. So even if our YouTube connection is going in and out, we are still playing by the rules of the Sunshine Act. Am I correct?
Yes, you are, and it is being recorded.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, I also see Mr. DePietro is on this call and I know a bit of an update about Northeast came through this morning. I, I don't know, Rocco, if you or if Paul, you'd like to share any information about some of the progress that has been made even since the meeting during the week?
Sure. Thanks, Katie. Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I'm remote, so I apologize for any background noise, but.
And I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but.
No, absolutely not. No problem. So as I indicated in the earlier correspondence, cleanout has been completed at the auditorium basement. Damage control has finished phase one of their work. There were some photos that I circulated to the administration that shows a much more inhabitable space than what was there before. The abatement, which is phase two, is going to be commenced by datum on Wednesday of this week. They'll start prepping to remove the remaining asbestos on the duct and on any of the pipes in the space. So out of that cleanout, there has been some segregated waste streams that I know the district is handling, including computers and, and paper records. And there was some things that the district decided to keep for use in other district buildings. So success on all fronts and the auditorium. I also spoke to Harold at Scranton Electric, who is in process of doing his shop drawings for the supply duct, which is the purchase that you guys approved at the last meeting. And he's about a week.
I think we, I think we might have lost Rocco. I know he was traveling while he was on, but you know, I could kind of pick that up. He was about, Harold at Scranton Electric was about a week away from being done with the shop drawings for that other duct work. So as soon as datum is done with the remediation, then Scranton Electric will get in there and run that, run that duct work. But things are moving right on the timeline that Rocco had initially set up. There was no unexpected, no curveballs with removing any of the stuff from that fallout shelter area underneath the basement. And it's, it's totally cleaned out right now. So it's, it's right on the timeline. I know that datum was going in to stage the area for abatement this week and they'll actually then begin the abatement in the, as soon, as soon as they come back after the holiday break. But it's, the area is going to be completely staged, ready for them to go in and start doing the abatement work. But it's, it's still right on the same timeline that, that was presented at the last meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Rocco, if you can hear us, thank you.
Sure, no problem, Katie. Thanks.
Thank you.
Director Gil Martin, when we move on, I would like Mr. Laffey and Mr. Doherty, there are two items that they're going to address in this, that really falls under this one blanket of, okay, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. We've spent a lot of time talking about distributing technology and specifically getting Chromebooks into the hands of our students. We did an inventory of what we had. We did initial calls out to our parents and out to our families and students via remind, via one call, asking who did not have access, who might need a device to access our enrichment activities, our enrichment review activities. And our initial result from the feedback we got was we only had about 200 people, give or take, reach out and said they were in need of a device in the first time we did this, which was a number lower, quite honestly, than, than what I expected. But something with a number that's manageable. Because as we start to develop a plan, obviously, you got to make sure there's no long lines of people waiting to get technology. It's got to be a very controlled situation just because of, you know, the pandemic that we're living through. So we do have a, a plan that's, that's organized. Every school has a plan for distributing devices. Rosemary Boland, I had two very positive conversations with her over the course of the last week where she even offered to, you know, if her staff wanted to volunteer and help with distribution, she was completely on board with doing that. So I thank her for that. So we were, we identified who would be on site at each building. We were providing masks to hand out. We were going to schedule each family in 10 minute increments, so we don't have people waiting. It was going to be curbside pickup. We have forms that they fill out with the serial number on it. So the plan that we have in place is, it's a pretty good plan. I mean, and that's, obviously you'll give us the go ahead on whether to move with that this evening or not. However, I want to bring up my concerns and I think Mr. Laffey has some concerns that just over the course since last Friday, I want to say I think things got much more serious in Pennsylvania with the governor issuing the order that, you know, he, or that everyone should have a mask. And then the president coming out saying everybody, you know, should, should be wearing a mask. And the thing that kind of jumped at me was over the, the weekend when the surgeon general, you know, put out a comment that said, you know, this week is going to be our Pearl Harbor moment, our 9/11 moment. It's going to be happening all over the country and it's going to be awful. And then I'm thinking to myself, is, is this week the right week to start bringing people in to pick up devices? And I'm not sure I, I could agree with that at this moment. I know Pat has some very similar concerns with, with food service. And I mean, Pat's, please don't speak as you, as you're ahead.
I just, if I can just follow up with, with what Paul said, I mean, we've, like the administration, Paul, myself, Missy, Dr. Fine, we've had many conversations this week about these issues. And as Paul noted, things seem to be escalating quicker, quickly. It could be a very difficult week. When school closed, we were serving food that next Monday, you know, so really there was no, we wouldn't miss a beat. We amended it where we're, instead of serving 15 sites five days a week, we're now serving eight sites daily and 15 sites on Fridays. And we're preparing for the Easter break where school was, school would, would have been closed the Friday, Monday and Tuesday. I believe those were the holidays. So we were anticipating, you know, packaging a larger quantity of meals to send home over the Easter break for the, for the children in the community. I spoke to Air Mark and asked him how.
In the fridge outside.
They said they could have that ready to go for Wednesday, though where students could be given roughly five or six days worth of meal, you know, to get them through that break.
Pat, pardon me. If I could just remind everybody to please mute if you are not speaking. We are getting a great deal of interference here.
So I just wanted to make sure aware of that and see if there's a different direction you want to head with this process as we move forward.
Yeah, so again, Katie, just to summarize what was said, we're concerned right now. And I believe that Mr. Doherty had said that at this point, we don't feel that we should be distributing the Chromebooks. We do have a plan, but with the surgeon general, what they said, Dr. Levine, again, was on basically saying, stay home, wear a mask. We know people that are coming to receive food are not wearing a mask. So we certainly don't want to put anyone in harm's way. So at this point, I think what we're, what we're thinking is the Chromebook distribution. Am I echoing? I feel as though I'm echoing.
You don't sound echoey to me, but we are really having a lot. Mrs. Orr, are you able to mute? I do see a few people who don't have their mute on.
Okay, let's go through and check.
That seems better.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So at this point, I think, and, and again, we, we struggled with this today. Most importantly, we struggled with the food distribution. I think the SSD has really, we've really tried to go above and beyond for making sure that our kids have food during this time. And so we really struggled with this conversation today. But we also have many people now that are distributing the food that are very concerned for themselves. And we certainly don't want to put them at risk either. So I, I believe that we had talked about, and, and again, this is an issue that we really, really struggled with today and I want to say that. But I believe we talked about possibly distributing food on the next day and then suspending that until, suspending that food distribution. Possibly looking at it a week out and then making a determination if at that point, because what we're being told, and again, I, by no means I'm a health, is not my background, but if we're being told that the peak of this is going to be within a week or two, I don't know how we don't take those extra precautions for our own people. So I guess at that point, I'm, I was looking to see how the board feels about that. And again, like I said, the Chromebook distribution will not happen. Many of our principals are concerned and staff members are concerned. So now the next thing would be the food distribution.
And if, if I can add just another step we took this afternoon was, you know, knowing that, you know, many organizations in the city of Scranton are distributing meals, meals to students and I, I'm sorry, children in the community, I believe you'll be voting on one tonight as well. I contacted the Division of Food and Nutrition to see if, if we were able to prepare our meals, which have the components that are required for, for reimbursement, could we partner with a community organization to distribute them? You know, there's been a lot of waivers that have been given due to this pandemic and this crisis. And the answer was, yes, we can. However, the parents would need to consent to it. So it's something that, you know, if we move forward, if, if, if we think, you know, we want to take a look at this, prepare enough meals on Wednesday to get everybody through the Easter break and then continue to take a look, look at this, possibly reach out to some community partners. Parents who consent, we can work with others that, you know, to, to distribute or deliver meals for them.
So I guess what we're looking for from the board in this discussion is if we suspend the food distribution and then revisit this in approximately, I'm going to say a week to 10 days. And then if, if we have the ability to start back up because we feel more comfortable, how does the board feel about that?
I, I just need to ask you to hold for one minute. I am getting. I am getting a lot of messages about the meeting. No one can hear anything, I'm being told.
Yeah, I'm getting the same. Nobody could really hear anything. It keeps going in and out.
I'm hearing all kinds of negative things as well.
Yeah.
Is there any way that we can get the, our Facebook channel to go live with this? I'm doing it from my phone and I do have some people that are watching from Facebook, but I'm not going to be able to do that through the whole meeting.
That's a good, I thought that was, that might be a good idea. What about just putting on our Facebook or something like that, maybe the Zoom?
Yeah. I think that's what we're going to have to do. Because I'm not going to be able to keep my phone.
Paul, can you speak to Mr. Delpree? I can't answer their question.
I can. As soon as we're done with this discussion, I'll give him a call.
He just said to me, he's working on it. Okay. But.
Obviously, there's an issue between Zoom and YouTube because you could see it go in and out on the live up in the upper left corner.
Can we post the Zoom meeting ID on like Facebook and see if we can get that out?
I think we might run into the same issue that we've had before.
Yeah.
That was a concern here.
Interruptions.
What if we have a waiting room like we did last time?
We did that today.
I have to jump in. My phone's burning up telling me nobody can hear this meeting or else it's cutting in and out constantly.
Yes.
I have no video.
Do we need a recess here for a moment? See if we can get back online here? Can we, how about five minutes?
Sure. Sounds good.
Okay. May I have a motion for a five-minute recess?
I move.
No, we are staying in this meeting.
Okay.
To see if we can get this straightened out. So we'll take five minutes. I have a motion.
Second. I move for a five-minute.
All in favor? Be in five minutes.
We'll just come back on the same link?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to leave the link?
No, don't disconnect. Just pause.
Leave your video.
Sit still. Thank you.
I seem to have no pictures of anyone, no images. I have a few scattered ones, but mostly it's black boxes.
Well, I think everybody just closed out their video because we're recessing.
That had been going for a while, though. That had been going for a while.
It's everybody's connection. I have.
But we are recessed, so I think it would be good just to pause for a minute here. Okay? We'll be back in five minutes.
Okay. Can I have everybody, the board members, back here? Right, I have a bit of an update from Mr. Doherty. They are working, we're getting bumped off YouTube because there are too many viewers. So, we are trying to also stream on Facebook so that we're continuing with our advertised platform, but adding one which hopefully will give us a little bit more bandwidth, or whatever it is you would call it. So, we are just gonna need a few more minutes on that. So, may I have a motion to extend our recess for another five minutes, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Five more minutes. They're gonna try to live streaming on Facebook as well as off right.
Okay, I think we can call this meeting back to order. Do I have all of the directors present?
Yes.
Gretchen, Catherine, Sarah, Roe, Tom and Tara, are you on? Sean? Jimmy?
Looks like Jimmy's not there right now.
Okay. While we're waiting for everybody to return, I just wanna confirm that we have added a Facebook livestream as well. But it is my understanding that this continues to be streamed on YouTube also. So, we are holding to our original platform and everyone should have access as advertised.
Ms. Gil-Martin, this is Paul Doherty. I'm trying to confirm that for you now.
Okay, thank you. So, we will wait to begin again until we know that for sure.
Ms. Gil-Martin?
Yes.
I just spoke with Mr. Del Preet. He told me that you are okay to start again. It is streaming on our Facebook site and it is still on the YouTube site. And they're still having some buffering issues with YouTube, but they'll keep it up there. He's also gonna share the Facebook link on the YouTube site in the comment section. But people can go to our Facebook page.
Okay, and the issue that we're having with YouTube is based on the number of viewers?
That's what Mr. Del Preet believes. He got notified by YouTube that it was a violation of the Terms of Service with the live, but he believes it's because, you know, the type of account we have that going over 150 participants or viewers live was kicking it off.
Okay, so if there are people on YouTube who have access to Facebook and they are able to view it there, that will help keep that number down?
I would believe so. I mean, he said it was hovering right around, well, once it hit 150, that's when it would kick off, he said. I mean, Mr. Del Preet is, he is on our Zoom and he's working right now. He's monitoring everything.
Thank you.
We are live on both platforms. If you look in the upper left-hand corner, you should see right now it says "Live on Facebook."
Yes.
And we're continuing to record the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so where?
We were talking about Chromebook distribution and food distribution. And I just had completed speaking to the board and I wanted to know the board's input.
I certainly think we need to err on the side of caution in terms of the health implications of all of this, although it is certainly a very serious matter getting this food distributed. And I applaud Mr. Laffey, I know this has been incredible effort on your part with the support of Aramark. Very grateful for that. It sounds as though there is plan in place to get students, get children in Scranton, not just our students, a good supply of meals going into the long weekend. And I think if...
Director Gil, oh, okay. You went on mute, Director Gil-Martin, sorry.
Yeah, okay, sorry. That might be my paper. But, you know, I think if we're able to work with those other organizations and get that parental authorization and go from there, you know, revisit this going forward. So, how does everybody else feel about this? And do I, I do have everybody back on this meeting now, right?
Yeah, I think Mrs. McTearne said we're gonna revisit after a week, was that correct?
Well, yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, my understanding, again, from watching the news is that this is supposed to peak between a week to two weeks. So, if we were to distribute before the Easter break and then reconvene, you know, previous, and then look at where we're at, I would say at least seven to 10 days. But whatever the board wishes, we will do. But I think at least a week and then revisit.
So, we wouldn't serve any meals then for seven to 10 days? Or wouldn't be able to provide any meals?
Correct.
And then after that point is when Mr. Laffey would be able to get releases from parents? If we can do it that way?
Well, excuse me, what I was thinking is if we can get five to seven days of food or available meals to the community, to the students and the children for Wednesday, you know, we'll put out, you know, through our social media, we'll put out through the principals, their buildings. I'll contact all the organizations that we made aware of our program and let them know Wednesday, we're gonna take a break due to the Easter holiday, excuse me, and some of the increases in the pandemic in the area. So, they'll have approximately five to seven days' worth of meals. We are allowed, the Division of Food and Nutrition has waived that, so we are allowed to hand out multiple meals for the long week. In that time, it'll allow me to game plan or strategize who we can partner with. I can reach out to some of the organizations. And then if we have someone that we can partner with, we can then begin the process of getting the parents' consent to deliver.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, I'd just like to say thanks to Mr. Laffey and the whole crew that's worked on this 'cause this, I think it's really gone smoothly. And I appreciate everyone's efforts in that area to get the meals out as best we can and keep everybody safe. So, thank you, Mr. Laffey, for that.
I thank you, thank you, and a lot, a big thank you goes out to Aramark and their staff.
Right.
So, it's probably best if I put maybe so that we all understand. So, if we, and again, Mr. Laffey, chime in, but if we do our final distribution before the holiday, on which day? Wednesday or Thursday?
We can do it, well, we can do it either day. Aramark said they would be prepared. Again, it takes, they're bagging 1,500 meals a day, so that takes some time. So, they think that they can have enough of the meals ready to go for service on Wednesday.
Okay, so if we say April 8th would be when we provide the families the last distribution before the holiday, and then we revisit this the following week, I don't know, what would the board want? How many days would the board want me to reevaluate this? I'm just trying to put a date on so that when I'm asked, you know, when are we looking at this again?
I would suggest that you reevaluate at the time that the meals would be running out. So, see where you are. If you still feel as though you're not able to move forward, and, you know, we can look for, maybe some other solutions are coming into play at that time. We can certainly continue to get information out to people about other resources and other organizations, as I know we've been doing on our Facebook page. But I just think keep reevaluating this and try to get it up and running as quickly as we can. But, you know, of course, understanding the safety and health of the, not only the people who are providing the meals, that of course is very important, but also the people who would be coming to get the meals and...
Right. So, the district per our calendar is closed on Friday, the 10th, Monday, the 13th, and Tuesday, the 14th. So, those are days where our district employees are off. So, if we look to reevaluate on Wednesday or Thursday of the following week?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we can move forward, Mr. Doherty and Mr. Laffey. Are you okay with where we're at right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We have...
First presentation?
Yes, please. Day Nursery? Ms. Hogan?
Hi, how are you? This is Grace Hogan. I'm the Executive Director with Day Nursery Association in Scranton. I did have a PowerPoint to go up. Not sure if that's gonna happen or not. There we go. So, basically, I am just here to give you an insight as to what Day Nursery offers to the community and what we have been offering to the community in Scranton since 1909. We are one of the oldest childcare centers in North America, actually, one of the 15th oldest. And we've been in our current location on Jefferson Avenue for over 100 years. Our mission is basically to provide high-quality and affordable childcare to all of our families. I don't know if you guys can see the PowerPoint, but I can't see it, so...
It has not started, no.
Okay. Shall I wait, or do you want me to just talk? It's up to you guys.
What does Mr. Del Preet think? Shall we see? Does he think it's gonna be up soon?
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Are you sharing your screen? Did he give you permission, or is he...
No, he is supposed to be sharing. He has the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Missy, I'll reach out.
Thank you.
I'm here, Paul.
Okay, can you get that PowerPoint started for Ms. Hogan?
Yeah, give me a second, bud.
Thank you.
That's not mine.
Did somebody take over my thing? Jenny? Virginia? Jenny, or... Virginia?
Yes, there you go. There you go.
Thank you very much. Let's try this again. Is the rep from the Day Nursery there?
Yes.
Hi, do you have yours? For some reason, it's not letting me share. You should have the right to share.
Okay, let me see if I have it. I wasn't ready for it, to be honest with you.
Billy, I might, if you give me permission to share, I might have it.
Uh...
I might have it saved.
You should have permission to share, everybody in the meeting.
I could try.
Can you try, 'cause I...
Missy, this is Jim. Would you like us to go SLHDA while we're trying to pull up Graces and work on that?
Are we good? Can you guys see it?
Okay.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, though, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're Day Nursery Association, established in 1909. Our philosophy, as I've said, is to provide high-quality and affordable childcare for families. Here's a little bit of the history about Day Nursery. We are established in 1909. We're a nonprofit agency governed by a Board of Directors. We are accredited from the National Association for the Education of Young Children for over 25 years. That's one of the top accreditations for early learning programs in the country, actually internationally. We hold a Star Four ranking with the Keystone Stars Program. If you're not familiar with Keystone Stars, it is a quality ranking system that promotes quality improvement in early learning and development programs in our school-aged children. We also serve children with a variety of funding options, which include Early Head Start, Head Start, Pre-K Counts, EITC scholarships, United Way Financial Aid, and Pennsylvania State Childcare subsidies, along with private tuitions. Currently, we are serving 60 preschool-aged children and 24 toddlers from a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds. We offer onsite Early Head Start for toddlers and two options of Head Start, Full Day Full Year and PDE, which are both full-day programs, along with Pre-K Counts and two classrooms. Again, all of our programs are full-day programs. Our programs offer developmental screenings within 30 days of enrollment, and we do assessments three times a year. And each time we complete our assessments, we have a parent's conference. Hearing and vision screenings are conducted on all of our Pre-K students. We have a minimum of 10 parental engagement opportunities offered per year, and those meet the needs of each family. We are a gold medal in the Healthy Way to Grow Program, which helps to sustain nutrition, physical activity, reduce screen time, increase deaf wellness, and family engagement opportunities. And we are open 6:30 to 5:30 year-round, which offers wraparound services for families of that work. We have a strong administration. We have an Executive Director, which is myself. I have been here since 2004. I have an Assistant Director. We have an Education Coordinator. We have a Behavioral Specialist right on-site. We also have a Family and Volunteer Coordinator, along with the Health and Wellness Coordinator. Our teaching teams, we have six teaching teams with 14 staff members. Five of those teachers hold a bachelor's degree in early childhood education, special ed, or elementary education. Two hold a master's degree. And actually, three hold a master's degree. Two of our teachers, oops, sorry, two of our teachers have the PA Level 1 certification, and they will be moving to a Level 2. They have six years to do that. We follow the Danielson Framework, and all of our assistant teachers or repair professionals either hold a credential or an associate's degree. And all of our staff must complete a minimum of 24 years of professional development annually. We use an integration of Experience Early Learning Curriculum and the Creative Curriculum. Both are research-based, which guides our educational plans for the students. We are aligned with the Scranton School District Curriculum. We provide developmentally appropriate activities that focus on STEAM and literacy. We have implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports, along with our onsite Behavior Specialist. We use Teaching Strategies Goals for quarterly developmental assessments, ages and stages for initial developmental screening, and we also do a socio-emotional screening using the ages and stages SE. We also have a variety of programmatic assessments, including class Eckers and Itters, all our environmental and interaction evaluation tools. We are expected to grow more than double, to be able to serve more than double of our number of children in the 21-22 school year at a new location. That location has yet to be finalized. We will be able to serve approximately 150 to 160 of the children in the Scranton School District. We will ensure that children in our community have the opportunity to attend a high-quality early learning program to build the skills they need. We are going to apply for additional Pre-K count spots, and we're gonna continue to build and grow those partnerships that we have, which offer free or reduced preschool opportunities to families. We have been providing early learning opportunities for the community of Scranton since 1909. Since its establishment, Day Nursery has developed a rich history and continues to grow the tradition of growing and adapting to meet the ever-changing needs of our community. Though much has changed throughout the years, our basic philosophy has never wavered. Our commitment to providing this early care forms the cornerstone of Day Nursery Association. That's just a little background of what Day Nursery is offering to our program, to our community, and has been. We work closely on transitions. We have a low ratios of 1 to 10. Actually, ours are basically 1 to 8, 1 to 9. And we have very high-qualified staff in all of our, in my center. And I do believe I speak for most of the ECE community. Most of our ECE partners in our community do have highly qualified staff members and continue their education as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hogan, I appreciate that. I would ask if you would email that presentation to... I would ask if you would email that presentation to our board secretary so she can share it with all of us. It would be great to have it on hand.
I did email that to her, yes.
Well, I'll ask her for it then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think I got, I'm sorry, I don't think I got Day Nurseries. I got Head Starts.
Okay, I sent it. I will send it again, Virginia.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually have a quick question.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for coming today and spending time to give us that presentation. The curriculum that's aligned with the school district, are you saying that the curriculum aligns with their pre-K program or the district overall?
We need to have a, we submit our pre-K program, our curriculum, to the school district, and we get a letter of support from the superintendent, which was your prior superintendent, every year that shows that it's aligned with the standards and outcomes that you are looking for in Scranton.
Okay. And then, again, Missy, with that question to you, is that aligned with our pre-K program? Because I know there's some question if our pre-K program had a curriculum or not.
So, I think you heard, the sign-off was not by me. It was from Dr. Kieran, the previous superintendent. So I have actually not signed off on their curriculum, if that's what you're asking. So I can't answer that question right now.
Okay. Dr. Finan, can you answer that? Was that compared to last year's curriculum? Oh, sorry, the previous curriculum when the previous superintendent was here?
Mr. McAndrew, I can't answer that, but I will tell you what normally happens. It's normally in alignment with the kindergarten program. The expectations would be normally in alignment with that. Having never seen the letter, and, and I haven't seen the comparison, but I know in my previous district, it was always alignment with what our expectations were when the children entered kindergarten. So I, if that helps you understand it, hopefully it will. It definitely isn't a comparative of pre-K to pre-K. It's just about whether or not the student is coming from the pre-K program are ready and have the skill set for entrance into kindergarten.
And would that be exactly what we're doing in our pre-K program now?
I cannot answer that. Okay, I don't have, I don't have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay.
I would just like to disclose that I am also on the board for Day Nursery, and I've, I don't know how long I've been on the board now, Grace.
About three years.
Or so, but, oh, okay, sure, life flies. But I love working with Grace and everything that Day Nursery does. And I'm really excited about the expansion and everything. And if anybody has additional questions, I'm sure I can help on that end also. Thank you, Grace.
You're very welcome. Thanks for having me.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, I have three questions for you. This is Director Cruz. So my first question, hello, I'm doing well. So my first question is, what criteria do you use when admitting your students? Currently, the district, their admission process is a two-tier process. First, they look at academic need by using the Brigance Test. And then, second of all, they look at financial need. So what criteria do you use for, to enroll your students?
Our criteria is financial need. And that financial need also has varying factors along with it. So we use a similar situation as Head Start uses for eligibility for the center. If you have more factors, such as single parents, incarceration, trauma of some sort, you will gather more points to be enrolled in the center.
Okay. My second question is, is where are your centers located within the city? Because one of the reasons what, what parents like about having preschool within the school is that if they have older children attending as well, they like having their younger ones with their older ones, so it's more convenient for them to have it in the same building. So where are you located within the city?
Absolutely. We are located at 332 Jefferson Avenue, right in downtown Scranton.
Okay. And then, lastly, my question is, the district currently has a high number of students who come from international homes who don't speak English, and many times they come and start school not speaking English themselves. Do you have any teachers who specialize in?
We have, yes, we have E L teachers with ESL certificates, as well as we have interpreters that we are able to utilize in the community. We do have many students as well now that speak varying languages.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Need questions from any other directors right now? Jimmy, you're, I think you're muted.
Okay, it looks like somebody asked a question on the, on the chat there, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh.
From Ms. Novak?
This is, no, this is Novak asked a question.
So highly qualified to me not only means the educational level that a, that a teacher holds, it means continuing that education to get their master's degree or further, as well as their years of experience in the early learning field. As I said, we currently have three teachers with their master's degree onsite.
Ms. Gilmore, we aren't taking questions or comments from the public now, are we?
No, we are not. I was mentioning that. Yeah, thank you.
That's for public comment. Thank you.
Do we have anything else from directors right now?
No, but thank you for that presentation. It was very good.
You're welcome.
Yes. Thank you very much for joining us this way and for sharing your presentation. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Discovery MI preschool. Am I correct, Missy?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, you are correct.
So before we begin with, sorry, so before we begin with this presentation, I'd just like to say, in the interest of disclosure, that Mrs. Nyvert is my campaign treasurer. So because of that, I'm going to refrain from asking her questions, asking her questions. You hear that?
Yes.
And, yeah. And, and in full disclosure, Mrs. Nyvert is my daughter, for those very few people who don't know that. And I also refrain from asking her questions.
I know her too, but we're not related, and she doesn't help with my finances. But hi, Stacy.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
I, I true sent in a PowerPoint presentation that is very brief, and I don't know if that is able to be brought up or if I have to try and figure out how to share it from my screen.
Mr. Delprey, are you able to bring that up, or Ms. Orr?
I don't believe we have this PowerPoint.
I didn't get it either.
Okay.
It was a link. It was a link within an email.
Okay, let me, I will see what I can do very quickly to bring this up.
Stacy, just forward the link to Virginia.
That's what I'm doing right now.
Thank you. Okay, I.
Okay, that has been sent, Virginia. You know what? Even while that's coming through, I think I can probably speak. And then, you know, if we need to go back to anything, I'm sure you guys can read it in your own time. My name is Stacy Nyvert. I am the board chair of the Discovery MI preschool. We are a nonprofit, independent academic preschool and kindergarten that was founded in 2015. So just as Day Nursery is one of the older ones, we are perhaps one of the newer ones in the, in the Scranton area. We are a Montessori preschool that is governed by a voluntary unpaid board like Day Nursery. So that means that no director, including myself, has ever benefited financially, either directly or indirectly, from the operation of the school. We are the only Montessori preschool in all of Pennsylvania to accommodate children that are funded through Head Start, pre-K counts, as well as the EITC scholarship pool that businesses contribute to. And like Grace, we also can take the childcare subsidy and private tuition as well. Our founding mission, however, was to ensure that at least half of our students attend the school at no tuition, and they are students from families with low to moderate incomes. We hold two licenses. The first from the Department of Education, who licensed our academic program that runs from 8:30 till 3:00. We also hold a supplemental license from the Department of Human Services, which allows us to operate outside school hours for before and aftercare and through the summer. We are currently finalizing our formal Montessori accreditation that will make us the only formally accredited Montessori preschool in Scranton as well. That will give us the Keystone Star four designation that Day Nursery has as well, which is the highest level you can achieve. Our programs, we currently enroll 60 children a year in three mixed-age classrooms. That mixed-age classroom of three, four, and five-year-olds in a room is a core part of the Montessori philosophy. We offer full-day and half-day programs, but all our children stay for lunch. Each classroom is staffed by a PA-certified teacher, which is a minimal, minimum of an instructional one teaching certificate and a certified assistant teacher. I'm on the second slide. We also have an education director and a floating aide, and they enable us to maintain an eight-to-one teaching ratio. The Montessori curriculum we implement and teach is aligned to the state standards for pre-K. Those are the standards set by the Department of Education. And like Day Nursery, our program is approved by the Scranton School District. And there's two key reasons why that matters. One is it ensures that the pre-K standards that our curriculum has to meet is of a public school standard to ease the transition into kindergarten and ensure they are kindergarten-ready. And it also supports our ability to obtain those tax credit scholarships that are a key component for funding families who are over the income threshold for other programs. We also have a small full-day kindergarten program, which again is a core part of the Montessori philosophy. Generally, our programs are open, our school is open from 8 till 5, which allows us to provide the before and after-school care that working families need, but also the summer programs that we run. So what distinguishes us from other programs in the area is that we are the only preschool in Pennsylvania to use the multiple intelligence philosophy and combine it with the Montessori programs, curriculums, and teaching materials. There are only about 12 Montessori schools in the entire U.S. that incorporate children that are funded through Head Start funding, and we are the only one in Pennsylvania to do this. Importantly for us, and a key part of our mission, is that all of our children are in what we, what is an unfortunate term, of economically-integrated classrooms. So we have children from Head Start in each classroom. We have children from pre-K counts in each classroom. We have privately-funded children in each classroom. And the two reasons that we do that is, one, you can't distinguish either programmatically or visually or in any way which child is funded through which stream. And secondly, that economic integration of the funding streams actually leads to better social and academic outcomes. There are several key partnerships and processes that we have in place that facilitate our operation. And Virginia, I'm on the slide that is key partnerships now, if you're moving through. The first one is, is that we work very closely with the Scranton-Lacawanna Human Development Agency, who I know of the final presenter this evening. They are our partner agency for the Head Start and pre-K counts places. They work with us to identify which families need the services the most and are the most qualifying for the places that we have. Complying with those programs also means that there are specific rules and guidelines laid out in each of those programs that we need to comply with that relate to the instructional day, the teacher credentials, the assessments we need to do, and the transition planning that has to be in place to, to support those children moving on to elementary school. And that's all in addition to the Department of Education requirements each year as our license renewal. We have a strong relationship with the NEIU, who do the early intervention screenings as needed for the children and provide those key services, such as special education support in the preschool level, the occupational therapy, speech therapy, et cetera, that children need. We do work with the Scranton School District Administration. They are our home district geographically, which means that we need their sign-off to qualify for the EITC tax credits. And we also get a small amount of money for Titles II to IV that we can use for our kindergarten-only program. The final key partnership we have is that we are part of the Success by Six Initiative that the United Way coordinates. That has been about a 10-year process that they have pulled together to standardize the information provided by early childhood education providers to the school districts that the children are going to. And that includes information such as report cards, assessments, IEPs, attendance records, all that moves with the child to their new school. They have also developed a timeline for the provision of that information to ensure that those packets of information on each individual child are sent to the appropriate school in time for the summer and the new school year. Our capacity and enrollment process is such that we open our enrollments every February, which we have done. We cannot physically add any existing capacity beyond the 60 children we cater for now. There just isn't space at our facility. Because we are a two-year program, we have some children returning. But each year, we have about 30 places, and this year, it's 30 that become available. And we have spaces available in all funding categories to ensure that we have quarantined and ring-fenced in the anticipation that we will need to accommodate additional children from the Scranton area. We are working to increase the number of subsidized places that we can have, primarily for Scranton children. So we are applying for more Head Start places and more pre-K counts places. And if the demand is there, then we are looking at suspending the kindergarten program for this year to ensure that we can make those places available for pre-K if needed. When the recovery plan was announced, and it was clear that the Scranton program was not going to continue, the United Way actually convened the early childhood education providers in the area to determine what capacity there was in the existing process that could be created in the existing programs. And so our capacity data has fed into that broader program to establish what capacity there is. There are several things that I think the Scranton School District and the, and administration could do to help with the transition to the private sector. I think, and this is the next slide, I think it is critical that Harrisburg realizes that Scranton will need to be a priority area when allocating the new pre-K counts places that they have announced as this year's budget process, and also the budget cycles going forward for the next few years. The 2020 Pennsylvania budget proposes some 3,000 new places for pre-K counts and Head Start. And I think it is critical that Scranton be moved to the top of the list wherever possible to try and secure as many of those places as we can. I think, as I mentioned, United Way has done a lot of work in compiling the capacity data across the early childhood sector. And I would encourage the Scranton School District to make, to help share that available, that information with families, so that they are aware of the existing programs, not just the one speaking tonight, which is a small sample. But there are many other providers with quality programs out there. It would certainly help if, when they, if they become vacant buildings in the Scranton School District, if they are able to be prioritized for early childhood activities. That gets back to the point Ms. Cruz was making, that the, the location of facilities near where other children are already going to school is a critical component of family life. So anything that can be done to help spread the locations out closer to those primary schools and elementary schools would be great. And it would be great to work with community providers to help transition families from the existing program into the community sector, and then obviously work with us to, on that smooth transition back to elementary school. So my final slide is that I think it's important for the board and the community to know that ever since to know that ever since the recovery plan was handed down, that the community and private providers have actually been planning for ways to accommodate the children in case of increased need in Scranton and that those discussions have been coordinated by the United Way. I think it's important for the community to understand that there is a wide range of quality preschool programs in a variety of locations across the city. Preschool has changed dramatically in the last five to ten years with both the standards that they must adhere to and the funding that has been invested in that. And I think people who might have been looking for preschool a few years ago would be surprised at the range of choices available now. And I think it's incredibly important to keep working with the district to have that smooth transition from the Scranton program into that community sector and maintain that dialogue as we, for both this school year and the next school year to make sure that that is as seamless as process as possible. Thank you.
Stacy, thank you very much. I think you drive home a very, very important point that the district absolutely has an obligation and a responsibility to make sure these partnerships are fostered and that we are getting this information out to our families and making this transition as seamless as possible. So thank you for acknowledging that and for sharing the work that has already been done. Do any of the directors have any questions at this time?
Yeah, first of all, Stacy, thank you for coming and presenting. I guess my first question is, when you say that, you know, of using our empty buildings, you talk about renting, leasing them, or just the district letting you guys use them?
Oh, I think if whatever would need to be done, do you know what I mean? I think it's certainly not conceivable in, from my understanding, it's not conceivable to co-locate private programs or programs operated, sorry, programs not operated by the Scranton School District in the same facilities as those operated by the Scranton School District. I understand that is not an option. So I assume the only way that could happen would be through either the lease or the sale of buildings because they became vacant.
And thank you for the answer. And then I have one more question, I guess. You said something about if you had to expand, you would get rid of your kindergarten program? Or did I misunderstand that?
Yes, we currently have six children and we have six kindergarten places, which, and operating a kindergarten program is a core part of the Montessori philosophy. It's three to six, it's two years of pre-K and a year of kindergarten. But if there was pressure on places for pre-K, we could vacate the kindergarten program for this year and make those places available for pre-K.
Yeah, I would just ask because I kind of think that might, you know, disrupt somebody who's in pre-K, you know, going to the same school in kindergarten. So that'd be a little bit of my fear, that they would have to do, you know, do a change to go somewhere else. But okay, thank you for the answers.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. What was that?
I'm sorry, if, my fear would be in that if you had to get rid of your kindergarten program, all those, you know, students who started at pre-K would have to transition to a different school. I just think it'd be, you know, easier if they just went from a pre-K program right to kindergarten program in the same, with the same program or same building and everything.
Mrs. Nyver, this is Tariyani. So going forward then, how many spots realistically do you think that you would have for next year?
I think you're on mute.
I'm on mute.
All right, okay. So we have, that's okay. We have, we have thirty-two places that are vacant this year. We have not, we have enrolled, I believe, eight of our private pay places. We specifically have held off on the Head Start and pre-K counts places because, as Day Nursery mentioned, it's not just an income eligibility factor. There are other risk factors that need to be taken into account. And you, you have to prioritize the kids that need it the most. And you can't do that if you're allocating places on a first-come, first-served basis. So at the moment, we have expressions of interest for people that want to come to the school. And we will sit down and basically triage those with the agency, with our partners, to make sure we have, we're accommodating the children that really need to benefit from the program the most.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from directors at this time?
And I guess I'll ask the same question as last time. The curriculum, was that approved this year by our district?
Yes. Director McAndrew, yes, I actually signed off on that this year.
And does that fall in line similar to what our pre-K program is doing right now?
I mean, I wouldn't have signed off if it didn't. But to ask me, I signed off on that this summer. So I don't, you know, I signed off on it for a reason, so I'm going to say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So Director McAndrew, if I can clarify on that. So we, all of the, as part of our original licensure form, the Department of Education, we have to comply and demonstrate how our program meets the published standards by the Department of Education. There are something like a hundred and fifty educational standards that range from phonics awareness to being able to know your name and address. And we have to establish how our criteria meets all of those educational standards. And then those standards have to be consistently applied and approved by the local school district to show that they comply with the state standards and by virtue of doing so, ensure children have the standards required to go into a kindergarten-level program.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Stacy, what's involved in getting that highest Montessori designation that you referenced? And what is the timeline for something like that?
So you cannot even apply for that unless you have three years of operation. It is an extensive, extensive process that makes a tax audit look fun. And we have to provide everything from strategic planning, standards, community resources. We have to have a peer review by other Montessori schools. Somebody comes, basically, the Montessori Association comes out and crawls all over every aspect of our operation to make sure we adhere to the Montessori philosophy, curriculum, only use the materials, and then Montessori protocols for the environment in the practical setting.
What is the timeline for something like that? Or is it topical?
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, so the, so the earliest you can apply is three years, which is what we have done. And we are, it is a ten-step process. We are on step four. We will jump to step seven once our final teacher is enrolled in the Montessori certifications that are required in addition to the Education Department certifications. Realistically, it is another twelve months before that will be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Nyver, are all of your programs full-day programs?
No, we do full day and half day. Some people, particularly our younger three-year-olds, do better in a half-day environment. We have the ability, and we, we have the ability to extend them to a full day when they're developmentally ready for it because nobody comes in in the back end. Nobody takes the afternoon slot if they're in in the morning.
And our, Missy, our three-year-old program is, is half-day too, correct?
Both our three and our four are half-days.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have anything else at this time from directors? Thank you very much, Stacy. We appreciate it.
Okay, bye-bye.
Take care. And we have Mr. Wanzak from Head Start.
Someone has feedback.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep, hi, Jim.
Hi, how are you, Katie? How's everybody?
Good, good.
I'm Jim Wanzak. I'm the Executive Director of SLHDA. And on the phone with me tonight is Erin Grigats, our Enrollment Manager, Angela Walker, and Megan DeGilio, two of our education managers. We're going to tag team this slide presentation and walk it through. SLHDA is a community action agency that is dedicated to helping low-to-moderate income families achieve self-sufficiency. And one of those programs is our Early Learning Program that offers Head Start, early Head Start, and pre-k counts programs. The mission for all these programs is on our PowerPoint presentation that you can see. If we can move to the, to the next slide. SLHDA would like to, just like to express our support to the district's reasonable approach to offering future pre-K services in your school district. SLHDA, along with our partners, has the capacity to handle the three-year-old population for this coming school year. And with one year's notice, will have the opportunity to develop additional capacity needed for the twenty-one, twenty-two school district. This timeframe will also allow us to look at future opportunities to even improve education. As you will see from our presentation, SLHDA has the capacity, staff, and expertise to ensure every low-to-moderate income pre-K child will have a free education that is nationally-recognized, along with the support services to their families. After the end of our presentation, we will be available for any questions. I'd like to turn it over to our Enrollment, Erin.
Mr. Wanzak, we can't, if she's speaking, we can't hear her.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm just, right now, we're all working from remote offices. We're on different spaces, just, just like you are. And I'm, I'm in the office, so I'm texting them right now to see what's going on. But I do know we have everybody on the phone. On the slide, I can't see on the slide of, she just needed to, I know she was on before earlier. Just see if there's viewing options. Yeah, Erin is on, and she's showing she's unmuted, so I'm not sure what's happening there.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I apologize for that. So briefly, what this slide shows is the eligibility criteria for the Head Start program. In a household where the gross income is at or below a hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline, it's the primary eligibility factor. So a family of four would not be able to exceed twenty-six thousand two hundred gross annual income. However, there are other eligibility criteria that make them automatically eligible for the program. If the child is a foster child, if the enrolling family or child member receives SSI benefits, if the child or family is experiencing homelessness, and if the enrolling child or family member living in the house receives SSI benefits. Pre-K counts, the household gross income is below three hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline, which for a family of four, again, is seventy-eight thousand six hundred. Head Start prioritizes enrollment based on income eligibility and established risk factors. We have a selection criteria that is developed with our administrators as well as parents that are involved in the program to set up a prior needs that establish risk factors for families and children. So for example, if the family is receiving substance abuse treatment or if they're involved with children in youth, children with special needs, if they're dual-language learners, those are just some of the things that help us to identify families that are needing services. We are permitted to enroll children beyond the hundred percent of the poverty guideline. We have thirty-five percent of our funded enrollment can be used for families whose gross income falls between a hundred and one to a hundred and thirty. And ten percent of our funded enrollment can be used for families whose gross income falls between a hundred and one up to two hundred percent of the guideline. Our enrollment, again, is prioritized based on income eligibility. So spots would go to children who are eligible at or below a hundred percent or those categorical eligibility factors before enrolling children that are over that guideline. Here is just some national data that we pulled together from the National Head Start Association. It really takes a look at some of the comprehensive services that Head Start offers and highlights some of the successes. For example, Head Start children are more likely to receive dental checkups and have healthy eating patterns. Parents are a huge part of our program. And therefore, parents are investing more time in learning activities with their children. The health requirements that we have prepare children and families for being up to date on all of their immunizations and medical requirements and having everything in order to transition into the school district. Just a little bit of data from our agency specifically. SLHDA is currently serving four hundred and ninety-four families that are within the Scranton School District. Two hundred and fourteen transitioned from our early learning programs into the Scranton School District last year. And we are looking at a hundred and seventy-seven that will be transitioning to kindergarten for the 2021 school year. So our program options look like this. We do have both part-day and full-day. Our part-day option is three and a half hours, while our full-day is six and a half. And we also have some slots for the full-day, full-year program, which is eight or more hours, and it is for working families or families that are enrolled at school. In the Scranton area, when we're looking at capacity with our returning children that we have for the next school year, we have a hundred and forty-five slots still that need to be filled within the school district. And then we have them broken down there by region. So seventeen in the Center City area, forty in North Scranton, south side seventy slots, and in West Scranton eighteen. And transportation is available in some of those locations. So one of the things that makes Head Start unique is that it is a comprehensive program that provides services not only to the children but to families as well. The idea is that parents are a child's primary educator, and children's successes stem from parent's success. So our family outcomes and the family engagement staff that we have work closely with parents in developing strength-based goals in those outcome areas, family well-being, families as learners, et cetera, that feed right into the child outcomes. That process starts where we have a family intake that's done. Then we have staff that go out and meet with the family to complete a family needs assessment, identifying what their strengths and needs are. They then work on setting family partnership goals and referring families to services throughout the community that will help them to establish those goals and obtain them. Parents are also actively involved in our parent groups and policy council, which is part of our governing body. So they have a say in pretty much everything that we do. And they are also volunteering in the classroom and specific activities designed for fatherhood involvement.
Hi, my name is Angela Walker. I'm one of the education managers.
To go over some more of the services.
I'm sorry. Again, my name is Angela Walker. I'm one of the education managers. I'm going to talk about some of the other comprehensive services that we offer to the children and families that we're serving. One of the service areas that we have is our special needs and mental health service area. Our programs are totally inclusive classrooms. So we see a wide range of children with special needs and challenging behaviors. Some of those children have been identified prior to entering our program. They have IEPs or services already in place, but that's not always the case. So we do work collaboratively with the parents to identify those children through our screening process and then to refer them for the appropriate services. We have collaborative agreements with IU-19 as well as Grant Counseling Center. and other community agencies that can provide these services to the children and families that we're serving. So again, part of our process is working closely with those families to connect them to those services and to make sure that those services are in place prior to the child entering kindergarten. Along with working with those partnering agencies, we also have our own staff that do work with the children and families. They go out into the classroom to visit classrooms, to do observations and to support the teachers and the staff members that are working with the children, whether they're implementing those IEPs or their behavioral health services to make sure that those are in place. And that's something that we're constantly looking at to make sure that we have enough of those staff in place to deal with the needs of the children that we're seeing. Another piece of that is our mental wellness. So we work with a licensed psychologist who's available to our children and families and staff as well. We have a Head Start helpline that's available to them that they can call in with questions or concerns. We also have mental health consultants that come out to visit our classrooms twice a year. They observe the children and provide, again, that support and guidance to both the staff and the families to make sure that we're supporting the children and, and getting those needs met. Because of the increase in the challenging behaviors that we were seeing in our classrooms, we did implement PBIS or Positive Behaviors and Interventions and Supports program-wide. So that is something that's done in all of our classrooms. We have developed universal expectations and rules for our classrooms. So as we're seeing our families transitioning or moving from one area to another, those expectations and rules are consistent between our classrooms. The staff works very hard to focus on teaching those rules and expectations along with the routines in our classrooms. And they also focus on social skills and managing emotions. So again, the idea is that we want to make sure that these children are not only academically but also socially and emotionally ready to enter into kindergarten. We also serve a large dual-language learner population. As you can see, we have multiple languages that are spoken in the program with the majority of them that aren't speaking English, that are speaking Spanish and Nepali. We've also seen an increase in the Swahili and African languages in the last year or so. So that is something that we are keeping an eye on to see how we can support those families as we're moving forward. We are very fortunate to have full-time interpreters on board with us. We have one that speaks Spanish and one that speaks Nepali and Hindi. So they assist with throughout the whole program, starting with the application process, any of those parent contacts that we have, any parent teacher conferences, home visits, IEP meetings. Our interpreters are part of all of that so that they can make sure that the families are understanding the information that's being presented to them. They also assist with screenings and assessments of the children, so they're done in the home language. And they do visit the classrooms to provide support in those classrooms as well. So that, again, they can speak the home language of the child as they're integrating into our classrooms. Our interpreters also assist the families with the registration process and help them through that process to complete registration for coming into kindergarten. For the languages that we don't have interpreters available for, we rely on the language line, which is a call-in system that we can make sure, again, that there's someone that's speaking the home language of the family to share that information with, with them. We have some bilingual staff in some of our centers, not always teaching staff, but it may be support staff, cooks and bus aides. And we do try to assign them into those classrooms with those dual-language learners so that they can assist as well. And we also are able to translate some of our documents into Spanish and Nepali. So our parent handbook, our letters, reminders to parents are going home in those home languages if they are Spanish and Nepali. And I, I know that our staff does rely on the Remind app to translate into other languages as well. I just want to touch quickly on staff qualifications. Again, both Grace and Stacy spoke of this as well. Our staff, we do have qualified staff in our classrooms. Each of our classrooms is staffed with a lead teacher and either two or three paraprofessionals or aides. So the qualifications of our teachers, they do have bachelor's degrees in early childhood or related field. If they don't have a bachelor's degree in early childhood, they do have coursework equivalent to early childhood certification. And our aides have a minimum of a CDA, which is the Child Development Associate. And you can see on the graph there that all of our teachers have those bachelor's and our aides have CDAs, or some of them are enrolled in the CDA program. We did have some additional staff brought on this year as additional aides in our classrooms because of the needs of the children. So those new staff are the ones that are currently enrolled in that program. Along with them having the degree, we do do continuing education as well. So we have professional development days built into our calendar. So there's lots of opportunities for them to get those professional development. At 48 credits, we do curriculum training, assessment training, challenging behaviors and strategies, culturally responsive practices. There's a wide variety of trainings that we do, we offer. And we also offer tuition reimbursement for our staff to continue their education. We provide health services for our children as well. We do various screenings within the classroom, vision, hearing, heights and weights, and lead testing. And if there are any concerns that are brought up with those screenings, we do share that with the families and make sure that we're referring them to see their primary care provider or to get further evaluation. So again, that's something we work through that process with the families. Our requirements for the program are that children have a current medical and dental home to make sure that they are getting that routine care and that they're up to date on their immunizations as well as having current physicals and dentals. And again, this is something that we do find a lot of families, that we do set that goal with those families, that they make sure that the children do have all of those things in place prior to leaving our program. And along with the health is a nutrition component of our program. We do provide meals for our children. Our center-based classrooms, the part-day classrooms, all the children receive a meal and a snack. For our full-day classrooms, they get two meals and a snack. We work with a registered dietitian who plans all of our menus. So she makes sure that they're healthy, child-friendly foods and that they meet the guidelines of the Child and Adult Care Food Program. Our dietitian also works with the families to make adaptations to our menu to make sure that we're meeting the dietary needs of our children, whether it's allergies or if it's something that is a religious or cultural preference. So she does work with the families to do that as well as assist them if there's any concerns with their child's eating habits. Again, we look at BMI, so if the child is coming up underweight or overweight, she will work with those families to make sure that the children are eating healthy and get them healthy and ready for school. And next up is Megan. She's going to continue and speak about the education and finish us up.
I, I actually have a quick question, Angela, if you don't mind. For the nutrition, during this time, are you, are you providing free meals still for the children?
We are not. We referred, because there are so many agencies in the area that are doing that. We were not able to get the waiver for that at this time. So we have referred our families out to the district programs, the Friends of the Poor, the different food distributions that are being offered. We have referred our families out to those services at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Megan, and I'm going to wrap us up a little bit here. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our education program. And all of our programs, both Head Start and Pre-K Counts, use the Creative Curriculum for Preschool, which is fully aligned with the Pennsylvania Early Learning Standards. All of our staff has been trained on it and are working to use it with fidelity. As Angela mentioned, our settings are all-inclusive. And we do use ages and stages, both a developmental and social-emotional questionnaire to screen children within the first 45 days of their enrollment into our classrooms. And that's kind of just a quick snapshot to see where they're at. Should it show any kind of concerns, then we would meet with the families and if necessary, help those families to walk through the referral process. We do child assessments, just as Grace and Stacy mentioned, three times a year, fall, winter and spring. We use Teaching Strategies Gold, which is the assessment tool that goes along with the Creative Curriculum. We use that to work with families to set educational goals with the children or for the children. And we also use it to do individual planning for each child in our classroom so we can look at where they're at, where they need to go next and make sure that those activities that are being planned are appropriate for all children in the classroom. We have a transition program where we work closely with districts to transition those children into either a four-year-old pre-K program, if they have one, or into kindergarten. School readiness is our focus, which is for all domains. It's cognitive, social-emotional, the gross motor, fine motor, math, you know, all of those domains. Our teachers or our paras do two home visits per year with each family. This is basically a parent-teacher conference, which they also do twice a year. But we go into their homes to sometimes put the families a little bit more at ease because we're kind of on their territory. And also, just to get a little bit of idea of the background and where the children and the families are. So this is a little bit of our child outcomes for our three to five-year-olds from the 18, 19 school year. So this would be from our Teaching Strategies Gold. So you can see each of the domains where the children are assessed and you can see how they progressed from fall to spring. And that would be those children who are meeting or exceeding the widely-held expectations, which are the objectives and outcomes that they refer to in Gold. Some of the things that we can do to work together and we have in the past is we can help with assisting our current families of three-year-olds who want to transition to the school district to get all of that in place, when by doing that, we have transition packets that we can include with the children. And we already do this for the children who are going to kindergarten with all of the districts that we work with. There's child assessment data, child and family information as well. And obviously, we could offer that quality pre-K for the eligible three-year-old children with the focus on school readiness. We do partner with school districts and childcare centers in our four-service, four-county service area. And these are just some of the requirements that the school districts and early learning centers would need to partner with us. They need at least three and a half hours. A full day would be preferred. They have to have a curriculum that is fully aligned with the Pennsylvania Early Learning Standards. They do need to offer meals, depending upon the part day or the full day. They would have to do either a breakfast and a snack or lunch and snack. We do maintain child staff ratios of one to 10, or sometimes around one to eight, one to nine. Our paraprofessionals, as Angela mentioned earlier, all need to have that minimum of that CDA credential. And partners would have to follow the selection criteria with income being the main focus. This is just a list that you could quickly look at of the school districts that we currently have a partnership with. And that wraps up our presentation. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk with you tonight. I'm confident going forward that we can find the capacity for those children should we need to and that we can work together to make this a smooth transition.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from directors?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I guess, first of all, thank you again for coming to present. I guess my first question is, you give a lot of data, the national data regarding health and wellness. And I think that's all, all great. But do you have any data regarding how they test once they leave your program and transition to the, any school district? Like their learning compared to people who did not go through your program or how they do when they, when they leave?
We are currently trying to work on that with school districts. Unfortunately, we would have to have school districts provide that to us. So we are in the beginning of process of doing that, and some districts are. But again, that is the work in progress.
Yeah, okay. I do appreciate it. I think we do have some testing scores possibly might be able to provide for you after this.
That would be wonderful.
Also, one question, you said you had 145 openings. If that's for next year, if you were to take on new?
Yes.
Superintendent McTirren, how many preschoolers do we have this year enrolled? Is it over 400?
Uh, I, I don't, Anne, Rebecca, do you have the numbers broken up?
He's around 400, 402, but we, that number has dropped since the COVID-19 virus. Last time it was counted, it was relatively around 402.
Okay. Thank you.
And that 145 would be for September, where we would only be, where, right now, it looks like we'd be looking at bringing in three-year-olds. And I believe your number of three-year-olds is lower than that. And then we would look at the capacity for additional slots in the 21, 22 school year.
And the only reason that it's 145 right now is because it's a two-year program. So that 145 doesn't, it counts, our four-year-olds already have spots. So that's 145 slots new for the upcoming school year that are still open.
Okay, thank you. And the teacher criteria that you have, you said some of them have bachelor's degrees that are in related field. Can you explain some of the related fields that they have degrees in, some of the teachers?
It would be elementary education, special education.
Human services.
Human services with a focus on child development.
Okay, okay. And anybody in the, in the administration, how does that compare to the qualifications we hold our teachers to?
Our, our teachers are elementary education. They are, we have, some of them may have a reading specialist. I mean, to, I don't know every single solitary certification that they have, but they're elementary certified.
Yes, I can answer. There is one, one current pre-K teacher who has a reading specialist. And I think the number of three-year-olds, Mr. McAndrew, is about 160 to 170 right now in our three, four-year-old program.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other, Mr. Schuster?
Yes. Can anyone at Head Start explain their relationship with this Scranton School District? Because you've had a past relationship with us. I don't know if it's used for screening purposes, other things like that. But give the board maybe a brief overview of our past history.
So, yes, so in the past, we have actually partnered with the district. And we have served children who are eligible for Head Start but attended your pre-K program. And we've tried to work cooperatively that way. But we have always maintained a partnership of transition where we work together. Excuse me? I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody say something. Where we work together to try to prepare the children and the families to come in to the school district for kindergarten. Something such as bringing the children for tours of the school. Again, sharing those packets of information about children assessments and some family information, things like that. Letting, and in that packet, we can let you know if they have behavioral health services or an IEP. Obviously, we can't share those documents because they're not ours, but at least we can let you know that they are participating in those programs.
Director Schuster, this is Jim too. Yes, we used to partner with you, but there was just, we have to follow strict federal guidelines with, with our funding. And there was just some concerns that we had going forward, just with making sure the credentialing was in place, the number of hours and the number of staff with the teacher-to-staff ratios and a couple of other things that unfortunately prevented us from continuing that partnership.
Thank you.
I have a question specifically for Ms. Walker.
I have a question specifically for Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, so the question that I asked Ms. Hogan in her presentation, you essentially answered in your, in the PowerPoint. So right now, I have a different question for you. You say you currently have four locations in the city, correct?
We have twelve, like, we have twelve locations in the city.
Okay, okay. So you have twelve locations in the city. And you said that transportation is only available for a few. So this is a two-part question. Number one, why is transportation not available for all? And two, if you tentatively receive more students, could you make transportation available at all twelve locations?
At this point, again, we do have, we have twelve locations in Scranton. Transportation is offered at most of those locations. There are a few where the children are receiving, we may transport for a part-day of care, but the full day, we don't have transportation for. And we try to place the children accordingly. If those families do have that transportation available, we try to put them in those classrooms where there's no transportation and try to make sure that we are meeting those needs. I couldn't say for sure whether we'd be able to provide transportation to all of them if we were to take them on. I believe at this point, our transportation is set for the select classrooms that we have that offered at. I'm trying to think. I believe there's only a few. I want to say maybe three that we are not providing transportation to in Scranton, and those are full-day classrooms.
And so do you place children in the locations according to where they live? So that way, if they don't have transportation, they can be walked there by parents or guardians, or?
Yeah, yes, we try to, when we do applications, and Erin might be able to speak better to this, but when we do those applications, we do ask the family for their preference. And so we do try to place them in the center that is closest to them so that they can, that they can walk to get to the classroom. And I do have to say that our classrooms that are full-day, that we don't offer transportation, we do have good attendance in those classrooms, and the families do make sure that they are getting the children to school on a regular basis.
Yeah, families are not, it's not required that they attend the center that's closest to them if that's what works best for them for transportation needs if they are walking. But in some instances, it does work better where they ask for a different location for working purposes. So it might be better for them to attend a center in a different location based on that. So it's all based on need.
Okay, what's convenient for them essentially?
Yes, we do really try to work with the families to figure out what their needs are and do what we can to meet them, their needs, and to find the best fit for the child and the family.
Okay, thank you.
This is Director Hume. Ms. Giglio, you, as I understand it, Head Start is transitioning to full-day programs wherever possible. Do you, is this, are there advantages to having pre-K threes particularly, and also pre-K fours in full-day rather than off-day programs?
Yes, there's definitely benefits for that. And we are in the process of trying to transition off.
Could you expand a little?
Yes, obviously, the more time that they are there, the more that we can work on them and the more practice on those skills that they get. But it also helps for the population that we work with and the families. It provides them the opportunity to go out and, you know, work and find jobs that they can do, which helps the family along in the process to all get to a better place. And that's part of our program as a whole comprehensive program, working with children and families.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
For those who can't get transportation, do we have to help provide transportation?
No.
Do we have any other questions from directors?
Yes, which three locations do you not offer transportation to?
We don't have transportation to our west side, one of our west side classrooms. Again, they're in a building where there's a part-day classroom downstairs, full-day classroom upstairs. So the full-day classroom does not have transportation. Our north Scranton two classroom on Main Avenue, again, same situation, two classrooms. One has transportation, one does not. And I believe there's a classroom in south, actually, I'm sorry, there's four. There's two classrooms in south Scranton that are, one in Valley View Terrace and one at Hilltop. And so those families live right in the, our classrooms are in the community centers, right within those communities. So those families are able to walk the children to the centers.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, for the west side and the north Scranton one, what's the reason they don't have transportation for everybody again? I'm sorry if you already answered that.
No, that's okay. When we were converting from part-day to full-day, that was just, did those transitions into full-day. Due to the cost of transportation, that was one way that we could extend the day to full-day, but we weren't able to do the transportation. So again, there are the options for the families that need transportation in that building.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I just had two things that I was clarifying. Someone from administration, I suppose, just clarifying, we don't offer transportation for any of our preschool students currently, correct?
Correct.
So my two questions that were just that, we do not provide transportation in a school district. And then it seems that there were a couple of questions about curriculum. It seems like people aren't understanding why we don't know the curriculum of these schools. But they are licensed schools that have to follow the Department of Education curriculum, correct, all of them, if they're licensed schools? Okay, that's all I.
Do we have anything else from any other directors?
Yes, I was wondering, I think it was Jim who mentioned that there was a relationship with Scranton in the past. I was just wondering what the timeline was for that, like, when did the relationship start and when did it end?
And Director Malloy, I'm trying, let me see here, I have that, give me one second. I think it ended in two thousand and eighteen. And it was with us for a few years. And it's something that, obviously, we believe, as you can see with our partnering slides, to try to partner with as many school districts as possible, but also partner with other sites such as Day Nursery and Discovery. Because we believe it's in the best interest of the community to have many qualified education centers moving forward. Especially in times like this, you're seeing where we are not providing, say, food right now to these children. We are in constant contact with the families to see what they need. So as the school districts have stepped up and provided food to any children in their school district, regardless of age, under, I believe, eighteen, we are constantly monitoring, is there anything else you need? Is there anything we can be? So I found it very interesting in your earlier conversation about you guys maybe not providing food, which might try to fall back on us to where we're, those families, you know, we might have to figure out a way to get them back lunches in those times.
Jim, it's Megan. Can I just pop in for a minute? So it was the state funding that provided us the chance to partner with school districts and early learning programs. And I have worked on that and kind of been the contact with the partners since the program started, and that was in two thousand and four. So we did partner with the district from two thousand and four up until two thousand and eighteen.
And Jim Malloy, we do have a letter here dated November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, that I'm sure could be pulled out of records and provided to everyone currently on the board, detailing some of the concerns from Head Start and why we could not go forward.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Director Gilmore, and I just want to, Director McAndrew had a question. I just want to make sure. We have approximately a hundred and twenty-six three-year-olds right now enrolled, two hundred and sixty-five four-year-olds. Many of our pre-K teachers are, have early childhood certs along with elementary. I believe Dr. Finan before said we have one with a reading specialist in addition to that. And the only students we transport in pre-K are homeless students.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anything else from our directors at this point?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you again to the folks from Head Start for this presentation. And to everyone who came forward this evening, we really appreciate all the information you shared. Mrs. Gribek?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for inviting me tonight to share how we could use our pre-K teachers to provide supplemental education as reading and math coaches for the Scranton school district. So if we could go on to the next slide, please? So a real critical challenge, we have several of them, is the level of student needs currently far outweighs the current supports that are in place. I did speak with PDE, and I spoke with the representative from Title I. And he said that it's critical that districts evaluate programs on a yearly basis to determine the needs and make adjustments. Additionally, our district is faced with trying to support students that are desperately in need on a daily basis using research-based interventions. Currently, as far as data is concerned, our district's third through fifth grade PSSA scores have continued to trend downward, and I'll show you a little bit of those later. And our teachers work and our paraprofessionals strive each day and work tirelessly to provide interventions that are both differentiated to meet the needs of all levels of development. And it is a challenge that they face, and they face it head-on every day. Next slide, please. This basically outlines what coaches do. Coaches typically are used in very, a lot of our local districts, they're used actually across the entire country. And basically, coaches are used to support classroom instruction in a collaborative, non-threatening, and a collegial way. Next, please. So recently, schools have been identified in two categories. The first is targeted, additional targeted support intervention, commonly known as ATSI, or target, and/or targeted support intervention. So they can be identified as either one or both. And we do have schools that are in these categories currently. And they're required to submit improvement plans to the state every year, showing what they've implemented and what the implementation was that was based in research. Coaches, the premise of coaches is they're to provide targeted, research-based practices in collaboration with teachers with fidelity to meet the identified needs as defined in our and anyone's ATSI and TSI plan. So the state requires research-based interventions to be included, used, and reported out on the success in those plans. Next, please. So the rationale here speaks about the current model that we have in place. Right now, we have specialists that, most of them have master's level degrees. And they are providing interventions now that we're school-wide. Instead of to K-two students, they are providing interventions to all K-five students in need by themselves. Unless students are receiving EL instruction or special ed instruction, these specialists are providing typically reading instruction, and only in a few schools are they providing math instruction. Many of our elementary schools do not have any additional math support as far as specialists are concerned. Our current pre-K teachers and paraprofessionals can fill this need in whatever way is needed. And our pre-K teachers can serve as reading and math coaches because they are elementary certified. Coaches will provide much-needed research-based interventions, especially to mitigate special ed referrals. The hope is when coaches provide these interventions, they will prevent an increase in special education referrals and compensatory education. So we want to provide these daily and systematic interventions so we can put the research-based strategies in place and hopefully mitigate future special ed referrals. Next. Slide five talks about research and intervention time. And research basically tells us interventions should be, have these four characteristics. They should be daily, systematic, and explicit, and intensive. And I can tell you firsthand, after being a principal for ten years, our specialists are strained. And to try and see classrooms and students on a daily basis to provide systemic and explicit instruction is a difficult task because many schools have only one specialist, and they're trying to service all of those grades. Coaches will provide these layers of very much-needed support. Our specialists can't possibly service all the students who need help. That's where coaches come in. Coaches typically, as I said, have an elementary certification. Next. So the next few slides are just some trending data. So you can move on to the next one. This graphic basically shows our PSSA scores in fourth and fifth grade. And those scores are tracked to show three-year averages and trends. Basically, the dark blue is where we want to be. Dark blue is showing academic growth, that we're meeting the standard the state has set for students in fourth and fifth grades. You can see, as you look at the chart from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, we're beginning to now show light-blue scores in fourth grade and dark blue in fifth grade. Now, in two thousand and nineteen, those have both changed. Green means we are maintaining, there has not been growth shown. And yellow means we're not meeting the standard for academic growth. So there is a trend that we're seeing as having a need to service our students in a more intensive way, especially in our third, fourth, and fifth grade classes. Next, please. This slide basically shows our district's PSSA scores as compared with the state for students who are advanced, proficient, or below basic. You can just take a minute to peek at that. And you can see that on the left are the advanced and proficient, and how third, fourth, and fifth grade graders in English Language Arts, Math, and Science compare with the state average. And on the right side would be your below-basic averages, and how our district compares with the state averages. Next, please. And this slide also shows students in grades third through fifth in math that are scoring below basic on the two thousand and nineteen Pennsylvania Assessment Test. So eight out of eleven elementary schools are struggling in mathematics. Next, please. So we have continual academic challenges. And if you go to the next slide, I basically talked to all the administrators, and they talked to teachers, and we pulled data. And these are common errors that, or common areas where students struggle, where they're having skill deficits. So there's just some basic ones in kindergarten through second grade. And they are consistent throughout the elementary buildings. So these are areas where the people that, you know, the administration and the teachers, and based on whether it's classroom tests or state assessment tests where students are struggling in mathematics. And there's the third through fifth grade list, which is very common across all of the elementary schools. Next, please. This slide shows the reading challenges that, again, the elementary principals, teachers, and whatever data we have, whether it's individual tests, or state tests, or basic universal tests that we give to our K-two kiddos, which would be DIBELS. K-two are basically, teachers and principals are saying they're struggling with developing competencies in the five big ideas in beginning reading. Next, please. And these are the areas that our third through fifth grade students are also struggling with providing, or developing proficiency in. Text-dependent analysis is a huge part of the PSSAs. It's about twenty percent of the test. Students that are struggling with language or are reading below grade level struggle with comprehension, which is another huge part of the assessment. Reading fluency is the rate at which we read. But in order to read quickly, we also have to have the ability to understand which would affect comprehension. We're also struggling with trying to have students become independent readers and problem solvers when someone is not there to help them. Another reason why coaches, when providing daily interventions, could help target these areas that are so desperately needed. And content literacy, social studies and science literacy is written usually two grade levels above the grade that students are in. So for example, if you're a third grader, you're reading something that's probably at a fifth or sixth grade reading level because you can't water down content literacy. And students struggle, you've heard of the fourth-grade dip. And that's because when students are in K to two, we're teaching them to learn to read. And when students are in three to five, they're reading to learn, and they're reading words that are unfamiliar and difficult. And with the limited support that we have, coaches would be an amazing layer of support for both these students and these teachers. Next, please. So the value of coaches, these few slides will talk about the value of math and reading coaches in the coaches in the classrooms. Next, please. I'm just going to abbreviate, this is quite a long slide, and I do have at the very end, after it's over, there's additional reference slides that you will be able to look at, and this will be shared, this PowerPoint will be shared with the board as well. Basically, ways coaches improve achievement in math, they narrow achievement gaps, reduce performance gaps. When instruction is explicit and research-based, it leads to large improvements in math skills. And I want to make another note here that only a few schools have math specialists, they're master's level people, most of them, and they have to travel between several schools. Other elementary schools do not have any math support at all. So again, another area where we believe our K-2 students deserve the support of math coaches. Next, please. Here we have a couple ways coaches close gaps in reading. They solve problems that impede growth, and they reduce future problems when they collaborate with teachers. Next, please. So what do coaches do? Well, this is just a small sampling of what they do. Basically, they support struggling learners with basic skills, as noted in previous slides and by the slides that I shared regarding the principals and the teachers and the data on slides 11 through 13. They provide targeted interventions, they plan, collaborate, and also serve on child study teams, which would be a phenomenal asset to our child study teams. They collaborate with colleagues, and they advance their learning to support the needs of students. This list continues with some of the important ways coaches play a vital role in supporting students and teachers. Next, please. So following is just a few, there's just a few slides here regarding implementation considerations. Next. The biggest, most standard model is called the three-tier support. It's also referred to as, you may have heard RTI, or Response to Intervention. There's generally three options here. There's a push-in support in the classroom where different groups are going on at the same time. This model is actually used in Pocono Mountain very successfully. A pull-out support, which is also used in several school districts around here, and a combination of both. Next, please. So the tiered model has three basic tiers. Tier 1 is just to provide support for all students using best practices. Next. Tier 2 is a middle-level support, interventions are more moderate, and the nice thing about this is progress is monitored. So the beauty about this is if our students aren't being seen by the specialist, if our students have a specialist that's only able to see them a few times a week, or a limited amount of time, students can receive more intensive support, which again, hopefully will mitigate special ed referrals. And then, once this progress is monitored, this can be shared with child study teams and parents to share the wealth of experience, I guess you could say, regarding strategies that are successful, so teachers could replicate those strategies in the classroom. And that speaks to the collaborative part of this. The next slide, please. And finally, tier 3 is your most intensive support when students aren't benefiting from tiers 1 and 2. It could be one-on-one tutoring, or a mix of instructional interventions. Again, monitoring, the progress is monitored and shared with other teachers, and also plans, makes plans for future instruction, which is huge, because if students are struggling with something and the coach has been successful, we share these interventions, and hopefully it will eliminate students having to be tested for something that possibly they may not need, just because they've had exposure to solid research-based strategies. Next, please. So these are basically intervention options, I won't read this to you. These are just some suggestions. Right now, all elementary classroom teachers are presenting 60 minutes of core instruction, basic instruction approved by the boards with the curriculum. And then, there's just some time options that we can pull out or push in. Many of the schools in the district call it "win time" or "what I need." It's being provided right now by specialists, again, that are spread very thin. So coaches can provide, you can call it whatever you want, but coaches can provide that intervention time depending on a schedule. So these are just some options and grouping suggestions that we can take into consideration as we move into planning. Next, please. These talk about scheduling options, and if you look at it, there's probably seven, six or seven periods a day in the elementary level. So, you know, when we create the schedule, it's flexible, and this just gives you some ideas on how we could vary the schedule based on these, based on the amount of time that coaches can see students, based on a pull-out-push-in model. There could be teachers that, I know lately teachers have been enjoying co-teaching together. I used to do it when I was a teacher. We would present the core instruction, and based on students that needed to be re-taught or reinforced or challenged, we would differentiate, which is what our teachers are doing now. It's really nice to have another highly educated person in the room with you to help do this type of co-teaching. Next, please. The rosters, when we talk to this Pocono Mountain, they are dark blue, by the way, in math, and they employ reading and math coaches. And they create their rosters based on data. They meet at the end of the year, they evaluate the data based on K-2 indicators and universal screener such as DIBELS, teacher recommendation, and then they look at the PSSA scores from 3 to 5. And based on those, that information, teacher recommendations, inventories, and so on, they create their rosters in the spring, so they're ready to go with their groups and who's going to receive coaching instruction come the fall. Next, please. So what can we do? Well, here's a basic list, and it's very small, but there's a lot of things we can do, and we're trying to help, as I said before, the most important resource we have are our children, and we're trying to help them by providing these tiers of instruction, utilizing coaches as a response to intervention before a special ed referral is made. Exhaust these opportunities for our neediest students and schools that are out there with the least support. Provide support during this process to these teachers. Instead of working against each other, we have to come together to implement this process effectively so it's successful for our kids. They continue to document progress and commit to the success by enhancing professional development that is targeted for our students' and teachers' needs. Next. Schools that are already using this are local, there's many more, but these are just a few I was able to visit. Next. So these are the three schools that we visited, and they do both the push-in-pull-out model, and I have to tell you, Pocono Mountain, their coaches are elementary certified. They actually set up the centers for the classroom teachers, in the classroom teachers' rooms. They do a combination of pull-out-push-in, they co-teach, they build a curriculum, and the nicest thing I thought was amazing was, they look at the gaps and they help edit curriculum as needed. We do have curriculum committees that create curriculum and edit it. But these coaches actually look at where kids struggling, what specific areas are they struggling at, and they readjust and revisit the curriculum as needed to fill those gaps with more resources and more ideas and strategies for teachers to use if they do see gaps are getting wider. The people at the bottom are the individual people that I did speak with at those individual schools. Next, please. Finally, this is just, this slide just talks about the future and how we're future-focused. There's a lot of amazing professional development that's out there around brain research. Many of our teachers attended Posner. Posner's a researcher on brain research and how the brain works with math. There's a science behind reading, there's amazing professional development that's out there to help extend and deepen the knowledge of all of our teachers that they're already enjoying and participating in. The FAR and the FAM are two diagnostic tests. The FAR is Fifeur Assessment in Reading, the FAM is Fifeur Assessment in Math. The beauty of both of these tests, they're already being administered at Charles Sumner School because Dr. Lamanna is over there doing some work, grant work, and many of the teachers, especially our Title I specialists, are trained on this. Not only do they give you a decent assessment, but they give you interventions that are research-based. So for the teacher that's not reading-trained or math-trained, once you give the test, it gives you the research-based interventions, another phenomenal area that we can help strengthen and advance our professional development for not only our teachers, but our coaches. And again, the benefits of participating as a member of the child study team is huge because these individuals, these educators can plan these interventions to help students improve and hopefully, again, reduce the number of special education referrals. And finally, next slide. That is all I have. I do have a couple of slides at the end that are just for your review, you don't have to advance to those, but they're just some more research, basically on math and reading coaches and how they help close achievement gaps. So I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions if you have them at this time.
Anne, thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for presenting. I do have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I guess my first question is, so the teachers right now, they're being paid through Title I funding, correct? Okay, so when they transition to coaching, would it still be paid under that Title I funding as well?
Yes, because now that we're school-wide, that, those funds can be used for any, anyone in the building.
Okay, do we know the total of their salary benefits and everything that we're, you know, still paying under that title? Like actually, I guess the whole cost?
I would have to defer to Pat Laffey on that one. I don't know, I wouldn't have that information, I could get it for you, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't have those numbers.
Anne, I can speak to that. Director McCandless.
I mean, just.
Budget for the preschool function that's called, that's covered under the Title I grant is applying to one more.
Okay, so my question, I mean, and just from my knowledge, the recovery plan keeps telling us that we're going to be, you know, saving about $2 million and transitioning it into helping with test scores, but I just, I just, I need some help showing where the actual savings are if we're still using the Title I funny, sorry, Title Fund money for paying those teachers. I don't understand really where the saving is coming from that.
So I perhaps can help you. It's not about saving money, okay? It's about reallocation of the resources. It's not about the 2-point, I think it's $9 million. It's about freeing up those classrooms so we can start to building, reconfigure the district and to make our footprint smaller, okay? It's part of the recovery plan that if, the recovery plan needs to reduce the number of buildings that we're supporting, because we have too many buildings we're supporting and we have, we have capacity in other buildings. And so part of this is not that we're going to eliminate positions, we are not. We're going to reallocate the resources in those classrooms, six or seven of them would be freed up so that we would look at programs such as the ones that we're paying rent for to reduce that so we're no longer paying rent. But that's the tie, it's not about saving that 2.2, $2.9 million.
And in the long run, if I may just, you know, add to what Doctor said.
Okay.
There's so many, there's so many students that are in need that Title I teachers currently right now, the specialists, cannot meet and service daily in a systematic way with providing interventions, K-5. So these coaches would be able to provide those interventions and hopefully close those gaps, not just 3 to 5, it's not just, it's not just focusing on students in those ages, it's our K-5 kiddos, it's the whole school and all the students that are in need, and we need that extra, we could, teachers will tell you they need that extra support.
Mrs. Grebek, are you anticipating that the teachers who are currently teaching?
I appreciate that, I just, I was more under the.
Mr. McCandless, I'm not sure you're hearing everybody else, Ms. Cruz was speaking. Seems like maybe your microphones were layered over one another.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think there was a delay on my end, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, it does seem that way. Ms.
Sarah, can you hear me? Okay, so Mr. Grebek, are you anticipating that the teachers who are currently teaching preschool will be moved into the capacity of being the math and reading coaches?
Yes.
Or are you planning to, okay.
Yes, and I'm working on, I'm working on a posting right now, the what do math coaches do, based on research. I already took those, those recommendations and requirements and, you know, creating a posting so that if that's something that they're interested in doing, that's what we, where we would hope to repurpose them, yes.
And what about their paraprofessionals who assist them?
They would be used as needed, and if you, you've been in many of the schools, Sarah, and you know, you know that their services and the experience they bring is greatly needed, so they would be, they would be used wherever they're needed.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Dr. Grebek, essentially.
I'm not a doctor.
Well, you are to me, Anne, you are to me. Sorry, Ms. Wonderful, and what we're actually doing by, with this, is it's as if someone had given us another $2.1 million that we can inject as kind of a real, almost a steroid, almost an academic steroid that we can push into areas of great academic need.
Absolutely. Where were you when I was doing my PowerPoint? That's a.
I was trying to get back into the, I got dumped. But, but it seems to me that by taking this money and doing this, we're not going to get out of recovery unless I'm wrong, unless we get the scores up.
Correct.
But more important than our scores and getting it up, it's getting the kids to a point where reading enables them to learn. And I loved what you said about, you learn to read and then you read to learn, and if we don't get them there, we're handicapping them for life.
And the sad thing is, Ms. Hume, is many of our kids show a progression of growth, K-1, 2, and then they leave. They leave our district, they're very transient. And then, when we get them in 3rd grade, those gaps have gotten so much farther because the content they're reading is so much more difficult. So if we can build their capacity as they're little and as they move up in grades, they're definitely going to be much more competent in reading and math.
Well, and yes, and then also we'll be able to help the people who come in who haven't had that, that, that growth. I find that I'm, I'm working with the 3rd grader at the moment, and I struggle sometimes with some of that content-based text analysis because it's not, I would, I would have been happy to have a coach.
And many of our schools, I don't know if the board is aware of this, many of our schools, all of our elementary schools actually have foundations, which is a scripted program based in phonics, and it teaches students the rules behind how to break apart words. The only thing is, they have, they've been videotaped, they've been evaluated on their implementation of it. In order to be certified as a facilitator, it's very involved, it's a very big time commitment of our Title I reading teachers. But the requirement of the program when delivering it is only a small number of kids at a time and approximately a 40-minute period in order to implement it with fidelity. So most of their day, if they're providing 40 minutes of instruction to kindergarten, and if you have two kindergarten classes and two 1st grade classes and two 3rd grade classes, you do the math, your day's been shot. Correct. And our 3 through 5, it's like, you know, a kiss and a wave, and I'll see, I'll see it once a week if you're lucky. And that's the reality of what's happening in our schools.
So, so with the coaches, we would be able to deliver a greatly enhanced, I have to say, I'm a tad more interested in the reading than the math, because I think, with all due respect, you cannot progress to higher education unless you can understand and read text. No offense to the math teachers, but you can by a calculator. So, well, there are huge problems in math that you do need to master. If we could inject this into our kids' readings, do you expect to see measurable improvements within a reasonably short timeframe?
I do, and I know while I say that, I have evidence to stand behind this comment. When we were targeted, for example, we had Title I and it was K-1, 2, those reading specialists only worked with K-1, 2. Those kids, we scored benchmark by the time they were at the end of 2nd grade. Now, that are, there were school-wide, those teachers are spread now to supplying interventions for 3 to 5. I've seen the proof when you have teachers that are able to provide daily systematic and intensive support, and the current model does not allow them to do that in the way that they so desperately want to. So yes, coaches, once we employ them in that, in that capacity, I know we will see improvements. Thank you.
Welcome.
Mrs. Grebek.
Yes.
You stated earlier that the Title I teachers are trained on the FAR and FAM.
Some of them are, yes, some of them are.
So some of them are, okay. Do you know how many out of the, would you say?
Off the top of my head, I know a lot of the teachers in Ms. Duffy's school at Sumner are trained, and there's a reading specialist at. And there's a, a reading specialist at Kennedy, she's trained, and there's a reading specialist at Adams that's trained. I, it was before my time. I don't know where they were trained. But Dr. Lamanna does the training for administering scoring and, for administering and scoring the test. And she is working hand-in-hand with a lot of the things that Ms. Duffy's doing at Sumner. And she is more than willing to provide that instruction on administering that test. And great, I hear grading takes quite a bit of time, but it's only for those kids when you're maybe at tier two or three that you think might need special ed and you're wondering what other interventions are out there that I haven't provided. So it's, it's a tool that's used sparingly, but some teachers are already trained.
Thank you. And then one more was, we talked about Department of Education curriculum. Does the current model in the Grand School District follow the State Department of Education curriculum?
Our curriculum, K5, is aligned with the state standards, yes. Did that answer the question?
Well, when we were talking about the, the other models, we were saying that all of them follow the PA, the state curriculum guidelines. Does our pre-K program currently follow that?
Our pre-K program does not follow, they follow certain guidelines, but that was again, that curriculum was created before my time. The current one we had in place is not aligned with the state. I know the letter people is what they do in, in preschool right now. That is aligned and approved by the state, but I do, I can speak on behalf of our K5 curriculum and that is state-aligned to the standards.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Um, Ms. Grebek, one other question. Do, you mentioned that there may be a reduction in, there may be a reduction in special ed referrals. Could you expand a little bit on that?
Well, the research says that when this program, when coaches are used with fidelity to implement research-based strategies daily and systematically, it has shown a reduction in special ed referrals because we're, we're using strategies that now we have found are successful. So the strategies that are being used that are successful are being implemented both in the classroom and with the specialist, and then it helps to close that gap thereby maybe not having to make a special ed referral if the child is experiencing success. I remember I said these programs, these coaches would monitor progress. So if progress is being monitored and they're being successful, then through that collaboration, everyone's going to know what strategies are working and what strategies the child is successful with. And in those areas, it's hopeful that it would mitigate special ed referrals. I'm not saying 100%, but you could do something or you could do nothing. And if we do something and we do it really well, it's going to have a positive outcome, in my opinion.
Yeah, it, it's, it seems to me that this fills that gap between the general education classroom and that huge leap to a special education and an IEP. And sometimes I, you know, that they, there's a whole thing that comes with that that can upset, you know, that cannot be in the best, how can I put it? That can make the child feel in some ways. It's just a great gap. It's a great leap. Whereas if we can find something that bridges that and possibly help some kids not need to go there, that might help.
And remember, the, the interventions fall on the classroom teacher alone. And if they're in Title I reading, then they pick up a little bit of the slack. So if we have a person that's attending those child study meetings that says, these are the interventions I'm going to use in addition to the classroom teacher and the title teacher, you're right, it will fill that gap and make that gap smaller. Any other questions? Anything else?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much, Anne.
Anne, great job.
You're welcome. I'll forward the PowerPoint to Ms. Orr. And I also have a listing of all the local daycare providers in the region. I'll also forward that to you as well so we can, you know, when the time comes, we have that available to our families.
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually have a question for Dr. Finan.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I think this is kind of been, this has been on my, oh, I have, I have a question.
I don't know who's speaking. Director Gil Martin, I don't know who's speaking.
I believe Sean is speaking.
Oh.
But the, the video and the microphone don't seem to be lining up. Do you want to start again, Sean?
I actually, I actually have a question for Dr. Finan.
Yes, so right ahead.
Yeah, I actually have a question for Dr. Finan.
I, I'm here.
So I think the biggest question that I've been, you know, thinking about over the weekend is, we were asked to, to vote on this. And so I was just kind of questioning that. Can you hear me?
No. Try again.
I'm gonna log out.
Are you gonna log out and log back in?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
No.
Sean, why don't you type your answer in the chat? Why don't you type your question in the chat?
I was thinking that.
Um, Dr. Finan, I guess while we're waiting for Sean's full question to come through, I feel like we might have some type of idea of what clarification he's looking at. So could we briefly, just in this chat, touch on the process of what happened between the last time we spoke about this to the current moment? Because I feel like there's great misunderstanding in the public of what happened from then until now. So I think that clarification really might help.
Certainly. So when we were discussing this a week ago, as, as we were discussing it, it occurred actually to the team, and it was Dean, Ian, and myself, that perhaps all we were doing is moving the timeline. And we weren't really making any major change to the recovery plan. So the following morning, which would have been early Tuesday morning, we conferred with the attorneys at, we have a team of attorneys at the Department of Education to confer whether or not moving a timeline requires a board vote, or does it not? And the answer is, no, it does not require a board vote. We are doing what is listed in, in the recovery plan. We're just dividing it into two years. Originally, the, the recovery plan talked about closing both the three-year-old program and the four-year-old program and moving it to a partnership within the city. Partnerships meaning other providers, working with those. When we started to do the research on whether or not the partners, the partnerships would have capacity, we found that they didn't have capacity for both a three-year-old and a four-year-old program. So through that analysis, in talking with them, we, we discovered that they would have capacity for just one level, which would be the three-year-old level. Why? Because the existing, if you think about it, the three and the four-year-olds, the four-year, current four-year-olds will go to kindergarten. So they are in our program, they will go to kindergarten. The three-year-olds who are in our program will go to our four-year-old program. So we thought it was a better transition. It worked in a number of ways. It allowed the partnerships to develop with, over time. It would allow us to be able to prepare a program, as you just saw Anne deliver to you, with, with math and reading coaches to assist in those classrooms. And it would allow us to grow that over time. With our discussion at, with our attorneys at PDE and rereading what the school code says, it was clear that we did not need a vote. The vote was taken. The recovery plan does stay as it is. What changes is the timeline for implementation. Now, it is my hope that we will be back in school if not the remainder of this year, come September. I'm very hopeful for that. But I don't know, given the current situation that we're all dealing with. Whatever that timeline is, we will be prepared to move in the direction of implementation of the recovery plan. But I want to make it perfectly clear. It's not about saving money, okay? It's about the long, long-term goal of reducing our footprint in the number of buildings, consolidating them. As you know, and I don't have to repeat this, you know the condition of most of our buildings. We have very few buildings that don't require hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars of repairs. Under normal circumstances, a district can't afford to redo all those repairs. I think at one time, the estimate was 148 million. And if we look at that in today's standards, it's probably closer to 170 million. We don't have that capacity. We couldn't even borrow that kind of money. So the recovery plan, and remember, it's about financial recovery and stability. That means moving forward, you will have money to meet your bills. Right now, we are paycheck to paycheck. We are hoping that what we think we will collect in taxes, what we think we will get from the, the budget that was unveiled in February, we will get. What if we don't? We have no reserves. You did hear a capital, capital reserve fund of $5 million. Well, of course, we're paying for Northeast intermediate school repairs and other repairs out of that. We have $166 million budget. $5 million is nothing. And it's for capital, which means it has to go into building and building repairs. We don't have the reserves. I am here, and I've been placed here to help you get to that financial recovery. Along the way, I am also required to help you repair, fix, put in place programs that will help build capacity in students, improve test scores. And so it goes hand-in-hand. And I realize that many of you probably are not that familiar with the recovery plan, but it, it is our pathway forward. I hope I answered your question. If not.
You definitely did. Thank you for that. Just one thing on top of what you said that I'd like to clarify is, when people are saying we can amend the recovery plan, in the legislation, it shows that we as a school board cannot amend the recovery plan. It has to be, because circumstances change, it has to be by the approval of you as well as the Secretary of the Department of Education. And it's only if circumstances change. For example, it was just amended for preschool due to this transition plan rather than a complete shut-off of a full end of three and four-year-old. Granted, nobody on the current school board is saying, yes, please close preschool, but we can't make that choice to amend the plan just because we don't like it. Circumstances have to change since the plan was amended and put into place, and then that process has to be followed. It's not a simple, let's amend it and not do this. Correct?
That is, that is absolutely correct, Catherine. Thank you very much. That is great.
Doc, Dr. Finan, this is Director Cruz. Um, so when the, the recovery plan was passed in August of 2019 by a board vote of seven to two. Now, at the time, directors who are currently in the board and directors, past directors, the logic that they gave for passing it was that you did say it was amendable. And so that's a word that's, like, that's, that was the word of the week and that was the word for today. So do you, could you define in your own words what is amendable and what is not amendable according to the plan?
Certainly. Amendable, and, and as Catherine just mentioned, it means it requires my recommendation to you. It would have to be substantially defined as to why we can't follow this path forward and understand I'm here for financial reasons. So amendable could very well be, let's take this example, what if we only collect 10% of our taxes that we're expecting? And what if the governor's budget that we were expecting comes in at half the amount? Okay?
Okay.
Those are circumstances that are pretty dramatic, but that would require, I would think, amending the plan because we will not be able to meet our debt service payments. We will not be able to meet our obligations with regard to contracts. And so all of that would have to go back and we would have to look at what in fact we can afford. Okay, that would be one thing. What we're talking about with pre-K is not some, it is a timeline issue. I am allowed, under the school code and by recovery officer, to extend timelines. Because when we wrote them, we didn't know if they could be met. It's a pretty aggressive timeline. But in order to get you financially stable in five years, that timeline had to be pretty aggressive, okay? So moving a timeline does not mean that it's amendable. Amendable would have to be something fairly dramatic. Let's take this example. I, I talk in the plan about needing to add more AP courses, okay? Because we need more options for our higher-level students at, at, in the high school level. Well, what if we, what if we can't find eligible teachers who could handle teaching those higher-level courses? Well, that's not amendable. It would be a timeline issue. It would just have to be pushed off for perhaps a year or two. Something amendable would be, what if, what if we don't go back to school in September? Okay, just what if? I'm just posing that. That plan has some targets. We have an Act One, our requirement to raise our taxes to Act One. All of that will have to be looked at, okay? And so amendable means it also has to go through the same process and go to the, the Secretary of Education. It is unlikely, and they do not like to amend plans. In fact, I've spent all weekend working on this and they have not, there has not been a lot of success when plans get amended because the timeline gets pushed out. Instead of five years, it gets pushed to seven, gets pushed to 10, gets pushed to sometimes 12, and then eventually receivership because they can't get out of where they are. So it would have to be something fairly dramatic.
Dr. Finan, can you just briefly explain to us what happens if we do not follow the recovery plan?
Yes, that actually would, if we do not, I must give a report, there is a form that I must fill out. I must give a report to, to the folks at PDE. I file that report and consideration for receivership would be undertaken at that time. I am not going to tell you that it would happen immediately. I do not know their process for that. But as we were going, as we are going through tonight's meeting, I have been on my phone with them. They're asking how the meeting is going. So I am in touch with my advisors in at PDE. So it would be the, it would be a step towards receivership, which means that the board's power is literally taken away. And all contracts are null and void at that point, including teaching contracts, including transportation contracts, including any copier contracts, et cetera. It's all contracts. And they are, they are to be amended under the receivership. And a group comes in and a group runs the district at that point.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Dr. Finan, I, I think you, you touched on an important point. I, I think we are all getting a lot of feedback about, I thought you were in recovery, not receivership. Why don't you have the latitude to make this decision? And, you know, I, I think the, the point that needs to be made is that in adjusting this timeline and not amending this plan, you have taken into consideration the priorities of this district and this community. And I, I think you, you have looked to work with partners who may be able to, to take on some of these responsibilities for these students, certainly not rep. on some of these responsibilities for these students, certainly not replicate exactly what's going on in the district, but provide other options. And you have, you have offered up this option to, to phase it in so that we are not, you know, eliminating spots for three-year-old children who expected, their families expected to have them in a four-year-old program. So I think that's where, even though it may not be the board saying yes or no, or do this or do that, I, I think you, you have heard the public input that has been shared at these meetings. You have heard our, our concerns and, and our goals and, and have tried to blend that with working within the confines of the plan, but sort of bending it a bit, if you will, to accommodate our priorities.
Exactly. Thank you, Katie, for that. I've heard, I've heard everything everyone has said. Make no mistake about that. I understand the emotion behind this. I understand everything. I also understand that you are an urban area, that you do have options that some rural areas do not have. You heard from just three providers this evening. Those three providers talked about phenomenal pre-K types of programs. You're very fortunate in Scranton to have those programs in your front and back. The ability that they have to do outreach into homes, you will never have as a public school. You don't have those resources to, to have. We heard one has a school psychologist on staff. Another one has a behavioral therapist on staff. We're lucky that we can fund the staff that we have. I wish I could tell you, I wish I could tell you that you can keep everything just as it is, and we can add those coaches that Ann talked about tonight. You can't. You can't afford it. You don't have the money for it. I really, and, and this is really an important point. This transition that we talk, we're talking about with pre-K is an inflection point for this whole recovery plan because this is what has to happen to allow the building reconfiguration to grow that, to allow us to not have to pay rent on some of the classrooms that we're paying for. Some of your money needs to be spent in other ways than the way it's being spent now. And one of the other very important points that Ann made throughout her presentation. I have been trained as a reading specialist, so I know about the importance of early reading. If we can just save some children from having to be identified and be in our special ed program, we not only save those children for a, and prepare them for better options in life, we're going to save resources for those other children that we, we have to use those resources for. Right now, we're spread very thin. We need to reduce the number of students that are being identified in special, for special ed. And this is another, you heard it tonight from Ann's presentation. This is another option that we have to give more help to those students in the early years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions at this point?
Not, don't kill me because it's a long meeting. I'll be super quick. It's just clear that we have 300 to 400 people actually watching our meetings and listening. So I just want to make sure we take full advantage of getting the proper information out to everybody so they understand where we're coming from, where we're at, and that we're in a very hard position as a board administration. As Dr. Finan, nobody wants to be in this place, but because of all the years that got us here, this is where we're at, and we don't have a choice right now. It's either we work alongside Dr. Finan, or we go into receivership. As Dr. Finan briefly described, it's basically like a CEO coming in here, wrap building closures. You could have class sizes of 50-plus. They can do, they have no limits to what they want to do. So although people feel like, you know, what's the point of having a board because she is allowed to make these decisions? These were voted on in August, as Sarah was explaining. So these were not voted on now in a time of crisis. It is just where we're at at this point. So I just really hope that, hopefully with the information that Dr. Finan has given tonight, as long with everybody else, the public and everybody else might understand a little bit more where we're coming from and where we need to go. Because if we can have the help of the public with us, with Dr. Finan over these next four or five years, and we could get to financial stability, we won't have this hanging over us anymore, and we'll be at the place where everybody wants Scranton to be again. And I just really hope this meeting tonight can help people understand that because we're all on this board, not because we're bored and we want a hobby or something. We care about Scranton, and we really want to make an impact. Nobody's here to knock anyone down or to take anything away from them. We're here to make it better. And I just really hope that from this meeting tonight, everybody sees that and can hopefully get on the same side as us to getting where we need to be. That's all.
And I thank you for that, Catherine. One of the, I've been called every name, as you can imagine, and that's okay with me. What I will tell you, this has always been part of the plan. This has, has been discussed multiple times. The fact that you have options in your community for pre-K children doesn't take anything away from them. Just because they're not coming to our buildings doesn't mean that they're not getting the learning and the, and the activities and the education that, that we want them to have to come and be prepared. That, that is available in your community, and you heard it tonight. So people are calling it, it's disgrace, it's terrible. I really feel that without this step, we cannot move forward financially. I think it's going to be a struggle anyway. I am not going to tell you that this is going to be easy. You've heard me say so many times that we're $300 million in debt. We must pay that off. We're $22.7 million in a structural debt that every year it just pulls on our resources. And so we don't, we're not in a position where we can make easy choices. These are all difficult choices. But the fact that your three-year-olds do have some options, you may say they're not as good. I don't know. I'm not making that judgment. I'm saying that there are options, and there are more providers than what we saw tonight. But I happen to view the programs that I saw tonight as real, very high-quality programs. I've never seen a Montessori Multiple Intelligence program combined. I think the Head Start program has so many options for wraparound services, and I think many of our families do need that help in that wraparound. We, as a public school, don't have that ability, and we'll never have that ability to do that. So I thank you for your time. I apologize. I know how emotional it is, but I know it's an inflection point, and it's where we have to go, be to move forward. Unless some magic happens, but I don't see magic happening where money's falling into the district. It's not, I don't think it's coming. I can tell you it's not coming from Harrisburg at this point.
I have one, I have one last question for either Dr. Finan or Superintendent McTernan, whichever one is able to answer this. But why is the decision being made official tonight? As we all know, right, we're in the middle of a pandemic and not being made, and either at a time where possibly the world is back to normal, we could have an in-person meeting.
So I don't, I don't know that, this has been discussed all along, okay? Certainly, there's been a lot of newspaper articles about this, and there was a lot of pressure, well, parents won't know. When will parents know? And we kept saying, they will know in the spring. Okay? That was generally speaking. I think we heard a provider tonight say they do the registration for the fall in February. We generally do ours in March. So we coincide, we made this decision that we would talk about this in February and March, and of course, you know what happened. So the fact that the pandemic happened doesn't put us, it was always going to be at this time of the year, and it's for planning purposes for parents. Okay? So they know, if you're the parent of a three-year-old, you would know whether, what, what your options are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have anything else at this time?
I guess I just have one more question. I mean, since there were changes from being asked to vote and then not vote, why did the, the release come from the board and not the state or yourself?
I, really, I felt that was more appropriate.
Right.
I spoke with Dr. Finan and worked with Mr. Audi to make sure that it was in line with the legal information, but I felt it was important for this community to hear it from us.
Right. We did work together on that, and we did work with the attorneys from PDE. Mr. Audi was involved during those meetings. So it was all in concert. We worked together in a collaborative effort to come up with, and Ms. Gil-Martin did craft that, that release, if you will.
And Mr. Audi, did we hear from PDE?
Yes, we did. As Dr. Finan has said, we consulted with PDE. And first of all, I did my own independent legal research and came to my own legal conclusions before I even got on the phone with PDE. But we did consult with PDE. They did concur with the, it was their opinion, and I agreed with it, and they agreed with my opinion. And we do have confirmation of their concurrence in writing. Yes.
Okay. I, I just think with us being asked, and I, I understand your, your judgment on and everything, and same with the state, but I think just being asked about it, and then if, you know, at the end of day on a Friday, have a statement come out, I think we gave a lot of false hope that we were going to vote on it to the community. And I think it's just something that we need to work on going forward with our communication that I think continues to be a problem with last-minute noticing and stuff like that. But I think that's something we could work on going forward.
Just a quick question. Wasn't the vote originally going to be just eliminated completely or to transition?
Yes. Yes, it was.
It wasn't about if we wanted to keep it or not. It was if we wanted to transition to keeping the four-year-old next year or just completely eliminating this year. We never said that it was going to be a yes or no vote from the board to keep pre-K or not.
It was never, I'm sorry, I, I will just say, I'll, I'll add this. There was always two options, Option A and Option B, which was to eliminate the plan immediately, as was in the recovery plan, or to tran, to transition the, the elimination and transference out in two-step phase. There was never an option to not abide by the recovery plan. That was never an option.
That's correct.
Okay. So if that was believed, it was just a misunderstanding. We never said that we were voting to keep or not keep.
That's correct.
Thank you, everybody. I think we can move on to our work session agenda.
Well, I'm, okay.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Under Budget and Finance, we will review resolutions to approve the following. The bill list, the exception bill list, delinquent tax reports, the treasurer's report, repository sales, a resolution supporting Governor Wolf's proposal to expand the redevelopment assistance capital program to remediate contaminants in schools, to approve the deferment of the business, business privileged mercantile tax, to award the sale of delinquent real estate taxes, and to approve, the approval of the Lincoln-Jackson agreement sale, to approve Lincoln-Jackson survey, and to approve real estate assessment appeals.
And Director Yanni, if I can add.
Sure.
The, if you would like to consider the, the amending of the appraisal from, one second, from Valbridge, that was our previously authorized by the board, but the, the cost of the proposal has increased by $1,000 and is for property 344, 345 Iomia Avenue.
Okay, we can add that. And do you have that resolution for me as well?
I can email over to you now.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Audi, as well as Pat, looking into that, that other option that Pat just spoke about, how, how do you think that helps us with the assessment of these properties? And I mean, maybe Justin's on the phone as well.
I think, I think Justin is on the phone. You are mute, Justin.
I am Director Schuster.
Thank you.
The basis for the, the increase is to tailor the work to the actual court case that we're defending right now, that, that is set for a hearing in June, two months from now.
Mr. Laffey, you will email that resolution to all of us?
Yes, I'm typing it right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Mr. Barbetta, we do feel that is obviously the right direction to go, and that will help us greatly.
Yes, Director Schuster. Given the, the arguments that were offered by the opposing counsel at a, a court conference that we had approximately three or four weeks ago, we feel it's necessary to take these steps to defend our interest as a district, and quite frankly, to, to get our, our expert involved and to be able to do the work that he needs to do in order to support our position, which we believe will be successful in defending.
Thank you. Also, a question on the, the Lincoln-Jackson survey. Is that, is that normal practice to provide a survey when selling a property such as this?
It, given the fact that the, the deed in the district's possession is, I want to say approximately 100, if not a little bit older than that, 100 years old, we want to make sure that this is a smooth transaction, and so we believe that it's necessary in order to complete the sale and move forward.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
So we'll add that on as V12. Is that correct?
I have no idea what number that would be. I'm not even going to pretend like I do.
Okay. But it'll, it'll be read.
Can somebody take care of that? Yes.
Okay.
We will, we'll amend the, the board meeting agenda to include that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Fox? Catherine? You're muted.
I'm having technical difficulties. All my windows closed out, so I'm trying to get them back up. Yeah.
Okay. We have Community Relations?
Yes.
Do you want me to take that, Catherine?
You could. It's, it's trying to open.
Okay. The discussion resolutions for Community Relations to accept two donations for NEIS remediation costs.
Thank you. Operations, Director Hume?
We have several here. We have a resolution to authorize Palumbo to prepare an RFP for the Northeast Intermediate Portico Project, which is to prepare, repair the entrance on East Gibson Street for when we eventually go back to NEIS. There is a resolution to award an architect of record, which I understand will be tabled.
We will, we'll pull that from the agenda.
Thank you. There is a resolution to award an engineer of record, which will be, which has been, a recommendation has been received. There is the approved, the resolution to approve the payment of the environmental costs from the Capital Project Fund, and this is for the work at NEIS. And a resolution to allow the Friends of the Poor to use of Scranton High School on April 7th for its annual Easter food distribution. Anyone have any?
Director Hume, you, you do have the firm that will be You, you do have the firm that will be added to the resolution for the engineer of record, correct?
I do. I have it in the resolution. Do you want it now?
Very good. No, that's fine. Just want to make sure you have it.
Yep. Thank you.
Director Schuster?
We will have a resolution on personnel to approve the personnel report, assignments and appointments, retirements, leaves of absences and resignations. That is all.
Thank you. Director Malloy?
Under Special Education, there is a resolution to approve settlement agreements by consent.
Thank you. And Director McCandrick?
Sorry, I was unmuted. Under Food Services, we'll have a discussion and possible resolution for COVID-19 food distribution plan.
Are we, are we having a resolution for that? Or are we?
I believe we, I believe we covered that in the previous discussion of how we're moving forward.
Okay, I, I agree as well. So we've had that discussion that can come off our board meeting agenda. If it was not on there, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Then may I have a motion to adjourn our work session?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we okay or do?